The hour of six thirty having arrived and a quorum being present. We'll call to order the common council meeting of Tuesday, June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. I will ask that staff mute themselves while I unmute everyone and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Okay, Alder Harrington McKinney?
Here.
Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Hennig?
Here.
Alder Campbell?
Here.
Alder Lemmer?
Alder Lemmer.
Here, sorry, here.
There you go.
Alder Martin?
Here.
Alder Moreland? Alder Prestajakamo?
Here, thank you.
Thank you. Alder Rumel?
Present.
Alder Rumel, thank you. Alder Skidmore?
Here.
Alder Tierney?
Here.
Alder Vervier?
Here.
Alder Abbas?
Yes.
Alder Alboras?
Here.
Alder Balde?
Yes.
Alder Bidar?
Present.
Present. Alder Carter? Alder Carter?
Present.
Thank you. Alder Evers?
Here.
Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Furman?
Present.
Okay, Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I will re-mute you all. And ask our tech facilitator to read the meeting instructions.
Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link in your original email. Members, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video when you are speaking. The chair clerk and tech facilitator are responsible for muting and on-muting committee members. When you are called upon, a prompt may appear asking you to be unmuted. Please click okay. Use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Staff, click raise hand when you are asked a question. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the board, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. All right, I want to let everyone know that we had an issue with the registration system today. And so people who registered for item, agenda items between item ten and item thirty-six, if they registered by the Legistar number and not the agenda item number, then they are registered one item early. So this was resolved by three thirty PM today, so anybody who registered after that won't have been impacted. But anybody who registered before that may have been impacted, and so I will be asking registrants on the relevant items to be clear which item they have registered on and wish to speak to. But we should assume that anyone, we will assume that anybody who is registered for item number thirty-two actually wanted to register on item number thirty-three. If that is not correct, and you are on the meeting and wishing to speak, or viewing the meeting and having registered, please let the Alders know via email. Again, if you registered on item number thirty-two and actually did want to register on that item, please let the Alders know. We assume, given the volume, that most people wanted to register on item number thirty-three. And Alders, you should all have a registration list in your email. It's quite long, so I won't be reading all of the names of folks that have registered, but I encourage you to look through that registration list. All right, and now we will turn to President Carter for suspension of the rules. Excuse me, Vice President Abbas has his hand up.
Yeah, one good question. I apologize, there are so many emails I have. Who sent that list? Can we know which clerk sent us the list of all the attendees?
It will have come from Joe.
Yeah, that was actually me, Alder, so it would be Shraeben Joseph.
All right, thanks, Shraeben. Appreciate it. Thanks.
No problem.
Thank you, Alder. All right.
Suspension of the rules, suspension of the rules two point oh four, Order of Business, two point oh five, introduction of business, two point two four ordinances, and two point two five resolutions for items so designated on the agenda.
Vice President Abbas?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote suspending the rules? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote for suspension of the rules, and we'll move on to petitions and communications. For item number one, which is a petition regarding Betty's Real Estate, from Betty's Real Estate LLC regarding attachment to the town of Burke, from the town of Burke to the city of Madison. We have one registrant who is in support, not wishing to speak, Anders Alberg of East Mifflin Street. And President Carter, for a motion, you'll note the motion is to place on file.
Yes, item one, six oh six two one, petition received in the Madison City Clerk's Office, five nineteen, two thousand and twenty, from Betty Real Estate LLC. Recommendation action placed on file without prejudice.
Vice President Abbas?
Yes, second to place on file.
So it's been moved and seconded to place on file without prejudice. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote to place on file without prejudice? Seeing none, we'll record that vote. We'll move on to item number two, which is a corrected petition on the same subject. And we have three registrants, all in support, none of them wishing to speak, Amy Dietzler of Lisa Ann Drive, Lisa Hanson of Dubury Drive, and Julia Perez of Western Ave. Are there any questions for any of our registrants? Seeing none, President Carter.
Item two, six oh, item eight, nine, one, referred for introduction.
Vice President Abbas?
Yes, second to introduction.
Moved and seconded to introduce. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we will do so. That item is introduced. That brings us to appeals, item number three, which is an appeal of the Plan Commission Action on Conditional Use, request for twenty-two nineteen Monroe Street. And we have three registrants on this item, one wishing to speak, Ethan Brodsky of Woodrow Street. Is Mr. Brodsky with us?
Mayor, there's no one by that name in the attendee list.
Right, so Ethan Brodsky is in opposition, as are Vivian Burnett of Martin Street and Gil Casby of Martin Street, all opposed to item number three, which is on for introduction. President Carter.
Move item three, six oh six four six, referred for introduction.
Second to introduction.
Moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote on item number three. We have no early public comment. So we'll move now to the consent agenda. President Carter.
Yes, at this time, the consent agenda will be moved with recommendation action listed for each item except one, items which have registrants wishing to speak, two, items requiring extraordinary roll call vote and are not included on the consent agenda by unanimous consent, and three, items which Alder persons have paraded out for discussion, debate purposes. Hearing items. Our agenda items five through eight. Confirmation hearing, ten. Agenda items of the consent agenda without, with additional recommendations as noted. Items thirty-four, Legistar six oh three four nine, men action referred to Transportation Commission. Items thirty-nine, Legistar six oh six four one. Recommend, recommend, recommended actions referred to Transportation Commission. Items forty-eight, Legistar six oh four nine nine, referred, referred to the next Finance Committee. And item forty-nine, Leg, six nine five, committed action, adopt substitute resolution. Items requested for exclusion. Items, item number eleven, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and forty-one. And items introduced from the floor for referral, rule six oh nine nine five by title only, establishing, creating a section four point three three of the matter ordinance to establish a downtown recovery program. Recommending action, refer to Finance Committee. So moved.
Thank you, President Carter. Vice President Abbas?
Second.
All right, I see we have perhaps additional items. Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I request that item forty-eight be re-referred to the Finance Committee meeting on, the Special Finance Committee meeting on the tenth of July.
Seven, ten. President Carter, any objection to including that in your motion? So item forty-eight would be referred to the July tenth Finance Committee, and then back to council? Okay, and then Alder Heck?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add a referral, additional referral on item number thirty-four to Plan Commission.
Item number thirty-four, also refer to Plan Commission. Thank you, Alder.
That is fine.
Any other items for exclusion or referral? Or any other items on the consent agenda? Any disclosures or recusals on consent agenda items? All right, we do have three items that are currently on the consent agenda where we have registrants not wishing to speak. I will read those. Please let me know if you have questions for any of those registrants or wish to exclude any of the items. So item thirty-nine, there is one registrant in support, not wishing to speak, Carolyn Wolf of Merleham Drive. On item forty-four, two registrants in opposition, not wishing to speak, Sean Sullivan of Keating Terrace and Suzanne Jones of Pelham Road. And then on item forty-nine, four registrants in support, not wishing to speak, Gil Casby of Martin Street, Dana Colas Lind of East Cheryl Parkway, Corey Young of Gary Street, and Sean No Last Name of Verona. I'm just going to make sure that we didn't have any additional registrants on any of those items. Give me a second. That's all. So any questions for any of those registrants, or any requests for those items to be excluded from the consent agenda? All right, any other items on the consent agenda? Right, so right now we have items five through eight as public hearings, item ten as confirmation hearing, items eleven, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and forty-one excluded from the consent agenda. On the balance of the consent agenda, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of the recommendations as listed on your agenda? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote. And move to our public hearing items. And give me a minute to bring up the registrants, please. All right, so on item number five, we'll open a public hearing on Legistar six zero five nine four, which is approving plans, et cetera, and a schedule of assessments for East State and Street Assessment District two thousand and twenty. We have no registrants. We will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move item five, six oh five nine four, recommend to council to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. Go to item six, open a public hearing on Legistar six oh six oh three, approving plans, specs, and a schedule of assessments for West Platt Drive Sidewalk Assessment District. And we have fifteen registrants in support, none of them wishing to speak. You have their names before you. So are there any questions for any of the registrants? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move item six, six oh six oh three, recommend to council to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor. Move the plan, the report of the Plan Commission, item number seven, open a public hearing on Legistar six oh four nine eight, creating sections of the MGO to change the zoning of properties located at two O two Midvale Boulevard, forty-four ten Regent Street, and two fifteen Price Place. And we have two registrants in opposition, available to answer questions. Stuart Keel of Verona, representing the Keel family, and Bryce Keel of Harper Road, also in opposition, representing the Keel family, neither wishing to speak but available to answer questions. Are there any questions for either of our registrants? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Item seven, six oh four nine eight, recommended to council to adopt.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adoption? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of adoption. Move on to item number eight. And so we'll open a public hearing on Legistar six oh six six two, which is amending portions of the MGO to allow electric power production and/or heating and cooling plants as a permitted slash conditional use in all mixed use and commercial districts, et cetera. And we have one registrant wishing to speak, Mike Slavny of Lakeside Street, representing the General Counsel of MG&E. Is Mr. Slavny with us?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the city staff and the sponsors of this ordinance. We are working at MG&E on a solar photovoltaic project, and it will be located in an area that will be coming into the city of Madison from the town of Blooming Grove. And without this ordinance, we wouldn't be able to have conforming zoning status because this area will be going into an agricultural district. So the timing of this ordinance change, as well as the timing of this kind of technology, couldn't be any better, and thank you again for your efforts.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the registrant? All right, seeing none, we will close that public hearing. President Carter.
Move item eight, six oh six six two, to return with recommendations for approval to the Plan Commission.
President Carter, I believe the correct motion is to adopt. That was Plan Commission's recommendation.
Okay, move to adopt.
I will second that, and also if you can add me as a co-sponsor, that would be great.
We will add you as a co-sponsor, Alder. Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item number eight. And that will take us to item number ten, which is a confirmation hearing on the appointment of Michael Haas for confirmation of a five-year term as the city attorney. We have one registrant in support, not wishing to speak, John Strange of La Crosse Lane. Are there any questions for the registrant? Seeing none. Are there any questions for Mr. Haas? Seeing none, President Carter.
Move adoption, item ten, six oh five oh four.
Second to adoption.
Moved and seconded to confirm. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of confirmation? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of confirmation and send our congratulations to Mr. Haas. And that will bring us to item number eleven, which is authorizing a non-competitive contract, and we have one registrant in opposition, not wishing to speak, Kayla Prins of Catalpa Circle. Is Kayla with us on the line?
No, she's not.
All right, there is a possibility that she wished to register on item twelve. And so Kayla, if you want to clarify your intent, which item you're opposing, please do email the council. And President Carter, a motion on item number eleven.
Move to adopt, item eleven, six oh eight six seven.
Second to adopt.
Moved and seconded to adopt. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of adoption, and we'll move on to item number thirty-one. All right, so we have one registrant on item thirty-one. Tara of State Street, neither supporting nor opposing, wishing to speak. Is Tara with us?
Yeah, I am, but I registered for section thirty, or for agenda item thirty-three.
All right, we will move you to item number thirty-three, Tara. Thank you for being with us.
It's also pronounced Tara.
Tara, excuse me. We'll move you to that item and come back to you at that time. Thank you for joining us. So there's no further registrants on item thirty-one. President Carter?
Move, recommend to council to grant, item thirty-one, six oh eight eight three.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of item number thirty-one, and we will go on to item thirty-two. And so again, for our registrants, I apologize, the system may have registered you for the incorrect item. And so I'm just going to go through folks quickly, and if you can tell us, so item number thirty-two is to grant secondhand article dealer, secondhand jewelry dealer, secondhand textbook dealer, and precious metal dealer and/or pawnbroker license renewals. If you are not registered on that item, please just tell us that you would wish to speak on item number thirty-three, and we'll call on you again for that item. And so the first registrant wishing to speak is Iomi Abuse of Main Street.
There's no one in the attendee list by that name.
All right, thank you. Chris Rudolph of Jennifer Street?
Hi there, yeah, wishing to speak on the next item.
Thank you, Chris. Joe Lind of Terragon Drive?
There is no Joe Lind in the list.
All right, Madeline Strasburg of Gorham Street?
There is no Madeline.
Veronica Figaroa of School Road?
Yes.
Also registered to speak on number thirty-three.
Thank you, Veronica. Clinton Ott Ford of Chandler Street?
Yes.
Yes, also speaking on thirty-three. Thank you.
Thank you. Adriana Hernandez Perez of Johnson Street?
There's no one by that name in the list.
Okay, so now we're into the folks that were available to answer questions. And so we have a number of them. Perhaps I'll read through the names, Joe, and you can tell us if they are on the line. Mary Cartier?
No.
Kevin Reymut?
No.
Brenda Salvo?
No.
Eliza Kruznisky?
No.
Jenny Steinberg?
No.
Jesse Havens?
No.
Aaron Verbrigg?
No.
Okay, so those were the folks that were available to answer questions, and then Alder, just a reminder, you have a long list of folks not wishing to speak that is in your email or in front of you at this time. that is in your email or in front of you at this time. So then on item 32, President Carter, a motion?
Did Tara have her hand up for 32?
No, she was for 33.
Move to grant, item 3260884.
Second to grant.
Moved and seconded to grant. Is there any objections to recording unanimous vote in favor of granting? Seeing none, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor, and we'll move on to item number 33. And so we will come back then to Tara Stangler. Go ahead, Tara.
Hi, yeah, so this is, just clarifying, this is for 33, correct?
That's correct. And for the benefit of all concerned, let me say that this is Legis 60764, the second alternate creating an MPD independent civilian oversight.
Perfect. So I would first just like to say that, and remind people that this began on the tail end of what is listed in this section as the fatal shooting of Tony Robinson by MPD Officer Matt Kennedy, or Kenny, I'm not going to apologize, that occurred nearly five years ago to this day, to which no action has been taken, no justice has been given. Satya has proven in her video to the Madison Police Department that she is not capable of being impartial towards members of the police force, and their force should not be allowed to appoint people to do oversight. To quote her directly, "It must be absolutely infuriating to stand in heavy gear outside while listening to people constantly insult your chosen profession. It must be frightening to stand and have rocks and other things thrown at you to be constantly in harm's way. Her impartiality offends me deeply. Her statement blatantly ignores the atrocities committed by the Madison Police Department and other forces and comes across as a refusal to acknowledge the ways Madison Police Department violated their own SOP." To name a few, let's look at Section 5, subsection C and F of the Madison Police Department SOP on demonstration and assembly, the Madison method. When we tried to speak with officers in an attempt at de-escalation, we were tear gassed and maced, to which there is video evidence that I would be happy to provide you with, Satya and Vic, if you're listening, which obviously is a violation of subsection C. As for subsection F, in terms of restraint of force and protecting people first and property second, the use of non-deadly force SOP includes a section on force considerations, specifically physical size and strength of weaponry of the person compared to the officer, and that's listed in tandem with the overall use of Graham versus Connor from 1989, which is a laughable offense, which they did not consider at all. If the community oversight committee is created, how exactly do you expect them to be able to hold the police department accountable for their wrongdoing, if even the mayor is failing to do so? Not to mention, in light of all things that are currently occurring, it's important to note that Agenda Item 41 includes $125,000 budgetary transfer, and this also includes nearly $50,000 worth of projectile launchers for the Madison Police Department, to which Satya is also listed as a sponsor. Would be happy to talk anymore about all of the other ways that the Madison Police Department violated their standard operating procedure. Tried to have a conversation with Vic, and you know, now that you know my name, because you see it on here, feel free to contact me at any point. We can sit down and have a conversation. But yeah, I yield my time.
Thank you, Tara. Next is Chris Rudolph.
Hi there. My name's Chris. I'm a law student at UW, and I've worked in police oversight in LA, DC, and I've been a presenter for the National Association for the Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. The legitimacy of the civilian oversight board and the independent auditor hinges on the community's involvement in the process of creating those organizations. You were in the process of creating a civilian oversight board and independent auditor position who will serve the community. It is essential that the council listens to the community now, before those things are created, in order to ensure that they reflect the community's desires. Advocacy groups must be included in the working groups process, and they must be listened to. I say this because other cities have been down this path, but failed to include the community from the beginning. If advocacy groups are involved in creating the independent auditor position and in choosing who fills that role, then those groups will have some stake in the success of that position. If the community is not included and does not feel personally invested in the success of the auditor, then this whole process will only further alienate the people currently calling for reform. The community will not view these groups as legitimate unless advocacy groups are the ones who build it and develop a stake in its success. The board and the auditor must be given real power, unlimited access, subpoenas. Denying any investigatory powers will erode the community's trust in the auditor and will provide fodder for those who would say that this council was never interested in real oversight in the first place. Do not lose sight of the fact that you are creating these organizations to serve the community. They will only be able to do that if the community helps create them and they are given real power. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next is Veronica Figaroa in support wishing to speak, to be followed by Clinton Ottford.
Hi, my name is Veronica Figaroa, and I am a former member of the Madison Police Policy and Procedure Committee, working on the recommendations that were approved by this council in December of 2019. And I'm speaking in favor of the second alternate creating the MPD independent civilian oversight and creating a member group of three elders that would work on logistics and operations of the civilian oversight mechanism to implement the civilian oversight recommended by the committee, the ad hoc committee. The time is now to start working on the implementation of our recommendations. Our communities of color can no longer wait for this to happen. Continuing to include more and more people into a simple process of logistics and operation other than the three people that have been on the front line of this doesn't make any sense. It's going to create more struggles to get people together to meet, more struggles to put information forward, and more time wasted on creating something to move forward. So I'm in full support of the three-member group. I'm in full support of the oversight civilian work group that is being recommended on this second alternate. I also want to remind a few of you in the council that as we were working on these recommendations with the community, side by side with our communities, we also were watching who was participant on these committee meetings as well. And I have to say that many of you shying by your absence in being part of these committees. I have to say that adding people that haven't been even part of this process or even had the time to read the recommendations that we submitted to this committee, it is a waste of time, of our time and your time. Claiming in the earlier meeting at the Finance Committee, a couple of you claimed that this process wasn't transparent enough to have three people self-nominating themselves to be in this committee. And I don't see what else needs to be here in terms of transparency. Let the community decide if they don't want these three people in this committee. Let the community tell you, yeah, we don't want Elder Kimball or Moreland or Bedar in this committee, rather than having that as an excuse to continue to hold up the process. And I have no problem saying, Mr. Skidmore, you haven't even been in support of an oversight board. You abstained that vote when it was time to speak your truth. The same thing with Barb McKinnon. So I really don't understand why the tantrum right now in wanting to be in something that you weren't from the beginning of our recommendations. So I'm going to ask that you reconsider your positions in trying to deviate the process and create this now.
Thank you, Veronica. Next is Clinton Ottford of Chandler Street in support wishing to speak.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to speak to what Veronica just said in her statement and support that. It's time to turn the ad hoc committee's recommendations into city ordinance. During the Common Council's Executive Committee earlier today, two of the three who voted against this item said they voted against it not because of the content out of creating the Oversight Committee, but rather because of how these three elders were chosen. However, given the widespread support of this item, 14 of the 20 members of Common Council are listed as sponsors. Three seems to be fine, because as Alder Kreml said, input from others is invited, but keeping it to three will allow this work to go smoothly, allow the technical process and the meetings with lawyers to go well. Also, three of these elders include two women of color, and two have been part of this process from the beginning. So these three elders, I believe, are qualified. So I would ask you to move forward with this motion as written now. Thank you.
Thank you. And so Alders, if you're following, we're now moving to the list that did register on item number 33.
Actually, Mayor, we had one person come in just recently by phone who's registered to speak, Joe Lind.
Oh, excellent. So we'll go to Joe Lind next.
Thank you. I wanted to speak today to voice my support for Resolution 60764. I've been a resident of Madison for over 40 years, and I've seen my fair share of changes and reforms. But some of the recent racist policies of the Madison Police Department have been sorely overlooked for too long. For the past five years, there's been a crisis of confidence in the police department and their ability to ensure safety in the community, especially for people of color, especially following the murder of Tony Robinson. The recent militarized actions taken against peaceful protesters following the murder of George Floyd has further eroded our trust. It is a time to put the recommendations of the ad hoc committee into action to begin to rebuild that trust. Creating a truly independent citizen review board would begin to amend some of the terrors in our community by ensuring we have a voice in the way that the police protect and serve us, as well as hold them accountable when that trust is broken. So again, offering our support to the voters here in our household for Resolution 60764, please pass that resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, so next is Jen Nules of Post Street in support wishing to speak, to be followed by Quinn Crossley.
Hi there. My name is Jen Nules, and I've lived on the East Side for almost 10 years. At this point, most of you have stated in the past, or even recently, that you are in support of community control of police or police reform, or at least a more healthy relationship between the MPD and our community. So at this point, you now have the power to make that change, and your constituents are counting on you, as so many other people have so eloquently discussed with you many, many times. Voting to approve this resolution is the most impactful first step we can make to begin this new chapter. As written, this resolution would allow a three-person alder work group to efficiently move to establish the citizens oversight committee. Now, I'm sure you're sensing how visceral everyone's emotions are and how personal this issue is for so many people. So it's vitally important that the work to implement the ad hoc committee's recommendations keeps moving forward in an open and transparent way with public input, and this resolution is the best way to accomplish this important first step. I urge you to take action and pass this critical resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next is Quinn Crossley of Bedford Street in support wishing to speak, to be followed by Tim Saubers.
Hi there. My name is Quinn Crossley. I have lived in Madison for two years, so I'm still relatively new here, but I have been slowly falling in love with our beautiful city. Since I've moved here, I've heard many people refer to Madison as this idea of an oasis where everyone is accepted and supported in their community and free to live an authentic life. The unfortunate fact of the matter is that this version of Madison is only a reality for some people, namely those of us in the community who are white. I ask you to please move forward with establishing the Oversight Committee as outlined in File Number 60764. Members of our community have been working diligently on these recommendations for years, and we need to be investing in making Madison a city where everyone is treated fairly inequitably. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Quinn. Next is Tim Saubers of John Nolan Drive in support wishing to speak, to be followed by Keith Findlay.
Hi, my name is Tim Saubers. I am, like Quinn, very new to Madison. I've lived here for about a year and a half, and I feel very strongly along the same lines as that when I moved, I definitely kind of came under the impression that it was a great place to live. And once you scratch the surface a bit, I would definitely say Madison is probably the most racist place I've ever lived in my life and easily supported by all of the institutions that are in place here. I think passing this, I'm sorry, this resolution that's been put forward is absolutely crucial. It's a long overdue first step. Frankly, I think it's far from enough and not even close to what's actually needed. What we should be actually talking about today is defunding the police entirely, but civilian oversight, I guess, is a weak place to start. So I would definitely strongly encourage you to vote to pass this. I think it's a first step and what will hopefully be greater change in the longer term. Thanks.
Thank you. Tim, next is Keith Findlay of Oak Creek Trail in support wishing to speak, to be followed by Ada Lynn.
Thank you very much. I speak in support of alternate resolution two. You all should have received an email signed by myself along with almost all of the other former members of the ad hoc committee urging adoption of this alternate resolution. As past co-chair of the ad hoc committee, I emailed all of the members of the committee asking their position. The signatories answered in support. No one responded objecting, so I cannot tell you what position the remaining two members are taking, if any. But clearly, the committee strongly encourages prompt action to effectuate the committee's core recommendations. You also should have received a copy of the letter I sent to PFC Legal Counsel Jenna Russo explaining why there is in fact no encroachment on the PFC or its functions. The independent auditor and the civilian review board will facilitate the PFC's decision-making on hiring, firing, promotion, and discipline. They will not supplant it in any way. Because I've set forth my reasons for saying that in the letter, I'll say nothing more about it now, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that. What I will say before concluding is that I think it's fair to say that for many of us on the ad hoc committee, our greatest fear was that our recommendations would sit on a shelf somewhere collecting dust. The executive committee's vote earlier this evening raises real concern that more quibbling about non-substantive matters will push the committee's most important recommendations further back on that dusty shelf. Now is the time to move forward with converting our recommendations into an ordinance that can be enacted into law. Converting the committee's recommendations on the independent auditor and civilian oversight board should actually not require a whole lot of work, because those recommendations were drafted using other cities' ordinances as templates, primarily the Denver ordinance, so it really shouldn't require a whole lot of tinkering to fill in whatever missing gaps there may be. No one knows this project better than Alders, Bedar, Kimball, and Moreland, so please let them do this work to move this along without complicating the process by adding more cooks to an already crowded kitchen. To delay action on this in these times of community tension and pain over bickering about who gets to be on the working committee would be a real disservice to our community.
Thank you, Keith. Next is Ada Lynn of Oak Street in support wishing to speak, to be followed by Rachel
Hi, I'm Ada. I'm a transgender resident of Madison on the East Side. I've lived here about five years. I first want to echo some other people's thoughts that Madison is a very faux progressive city that has a very woke sheen on it. And I also want to say that I believe that the resolution is a step in the right direction, but that the only ethical final state of policing in the U.S., including MPD, is complete dissolution and defunding. It's the only way to ensure our Black and Brown community members are safe, or safer, at least from state oppression. I know this resolution isn't exactly community policing, but it's something that I've looked into and know that it has better outcomes. And I found some good words by Chief Will Johnson of the Arlington, Texas Police Department. He says, quote, "A critical element of community policing is problem solving. Officers are expected to be proactive and creative, not only in addressing, but in preventing problems," end quote. This is in direct contrast to MPD's approach, as displayed these past weeks. Their insistence on brute force over de-escalation and their cowardly spying out of government buildings shows their obvious disrespect for the residents they are supposed to be protecting. Chief Johnson also highlights that having community oversight and community involvement in policing attracts higher value candidates. He says that APD- He says that APD, we are all involved in building community relationships and take pride in what we've accomplished, end quote. As a community member, I personally don't have any pride in our city's policing or our SOP. Community-controlled police would foster a greater sense of this trust. And I know that myself and almost everyone I associate with don't really have any trust for the police, and we don't have any expectation that we won't be the ones that are harassed or targeted if we wind up calling them, which is why we don't. I think the police showed a real blatant disrespect and disregard for the safety of its residents that protested and the safety of just onlookers and normal residents on State Street. The fact that they would tear gas all the way down Langdon when people just in their homes were exposed and could have adverse health reactions to it is a complete slap in the face to the residents that need MPD's help. And I think it's shameful that it's taken the city this long to form the body that it agreed to form five years ago. It shows an unwillingness to take the community's desires seriously, and I think that the rioting in the U.S. and on State Street shows that the status quo isn't working anymore, not that it ever really did. But I have a lot of worries about the efficacy of this resolution. And I think it's a little bit more of the toothless lip service that the city is fond of.
That is time.
All its community release. Okay, thank you. But yeah, I support the resolution as it's written as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, Ada. Next is Rachel Neeson of Langdon Street in support, wishing to speak to be followed by Byra and Ron Exelis.
Hi, my name is Rachel, and I am a social worker in Madison and also one of your constituents. I am here today in support of the second alternate of Resolution six oh seven six four as written by Alder Kimball, Alder Bedar, and Alder Moreland. And I am also here to express that as you vote on this, I believe that we need to keep the working group as listed. Alder Kimball, Alder Bedar, and Alder Moreland have put a tremendous amount of thought into this and have shown the community that they can be trusted to push this forward. I am also here because I want to reinforce what your black and brown constituents have been telling you and have had to keep reminding you for years. It is not a fluke that black and brown bodies keep being murdered by the police. This is what the police were created for. As a white person, I know about the cognitive dissonance that helps to protect us from having to deal with what it means to admit this to ourselves. I think that most white people, including myself, have defense mechanisms that prevent us from truly allowing ourselves to look at the world around us and what it actually is, what is actually happening, and to let that in. I am going to try and quickly put this in context for you. Two black men were found a few days ago hanging from trees in Southern California. This is a historical symbol recognized as terrorism against the black community, yet officials in Southern California declared this suicide. In June twenty twenty, this was called suicide. Black men have always been accused of getting themselves murdered. This isn't new. How are you all different from these officials who called these incidents suicide? How will you make sure that you respond differently? Mayor Satya, I saw your love letter to the police. You may as well have been writing a love letter to the KKK. One hundred and twenty people have been killed by the police since George Floyd's murder. Would you tell a KKK member, "Oh, I'm so sorry for the way the public is treating you right now"? No, I don't think you would. What is the cognitive dissonance? I believe your whiteness is getting in the way of seeing things clearly. Again, as a white woman, I know this happens, and we need to do a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next is Byra and Ron Exelis of Julia Circle in opposition, wishing to speak to be followed by Amelia Royco Mar.
Yes, hello. My husband and I are not categorically opposed to the resolution. However, as regards the Madison Police Department Civilian Oversight Board, we should be very careful in considering the issue. While there should be some input from citizens of Madison, care should be taken to ensure an accurate and fair representation of all members of our community. One of the guidelines in the resolution states that twenty to forty percent of the board members should consist of people who have experienced homelessness, drug, and/or alcohol addictions, mental health issues, and who have past criminal history records. While it is good to hear of experiences with law enforcement officers from all these groups, I hardly think that twenty to forty percent is an accurate statistical representation of Madison's overall population. It should also be noted that if this board is formed, it should in no way lead to defunding the Madison Police Department. Countless statistics have shown that when funds have been cut from police departments, crime, especially homicides, have increased in precisely the most poor urban areas. I would ask you to look into the recent study completed by African-American Harvard professor Roland Frye, who once again recently confirmed this fact. Formation of the board should also in no way lead to having any connection to the Strong Cities Network Initiative, which is merely a global elitist attempt to destroy local police departments using the United Nations as a Trojan horse. Police should not be expected to act as social workers, mental health professionals, or any other thing, as there are plenty of these types of programs already available in our city. Their job is simply to enforce the law fairly inequitably. No one is perfect. Mistakes will be made, just as in any other profession. If the mistake is an honest one, it should be admitted, corrected, and we should move on. If something is done with maliciousness, however, the officer should face the full extent of the law. It is safe to say that the vast, vast majority of Madison Police Department officers are there to serve and protect all community members, many times doing a tireless and thankless job. We should ensure that they are appreciated and receive the funding they need. Thank you for the opportunity to voice our opinions.
Thank you. Next is Amelia Royco Mar of Arena, Wisconsin, in support, wishing to speak to be followed by Katrina Ramirez.
Hi there, Madison Common Council and Mayor Rhodes Conway. I just want to point out, just for the people that are listening, what the person who commented previous to me said that MPD is not supposed to be teachers, mental health workers, social workers. Well, we know that. I mean, that's the point. The goal is to actually have mental health care workers doing the work for mental health care. The goal is to have culturally competent, community-supported, mental health care workers and social workers doing that work. Additionally, this complaint about having people who have a history of addiction or a history of homelessness or a history of some kind of criminal record, I'm sure the previous commenter and the people she represents in the city of Madison wouldn't mind if the person that stepped up to the plate and covered all of that criteria was a cop. Because the fact is, is that addiction and medicating, finding ways to medicate anxiety and mental health issues is very prevalent among officers. So I'm not in any way advocating for officers to be on this board. We need an independent board that is not influenced by officers. And currently, nothing like that exists. However, it's amazing that someone like the person who just commented and other people who think like her would have no qualms about having a cop on the board who has mental health issues and addiction issues. But the moment that person represents the working or, say, not working, but is housing insecure, money insecure, and is black, suddenly it's a problem. Do we see that? Do we see the spotlight on that? And if that's the majority, the silent majority, I don't give a damn. That's racism, and racism shouldn't have a voice anywhere in our city government or in any of these boards. So I'm obviously calling in to ask you all to vote for the second alternate of the Resolution six zero seven six four. Allow this work group to do their job. They have no interest in altering things and injecting their opinion after five years of work and plenty of community input from across this city and expert input from this city and across the country. They just are trying to implement what's there. And the effort to expand the group, I do not believe it's about diversifying it. Because this group is merely taking the work of Ad-Hoc. Can I have a few more? Can I have thirty more seconds?
If you can just wrap up, Amelia. We have many registrants tonight.
This group is doing the work, is implementing the work of a large diverse body, Ad-Hoc. So they're not, they're merely implementing it. And Veronica Figaro said it perfectly. Why now? You haven't been involved since. You've been totally opposed to everything since.
Amelia, if you could wrap up, please.
So please do support the second alternate of Resolution six zero seven six four. And let's, please, don't stall this any further for any reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Katrina Ramirez of Johnson Street in support, wishing to speak to be followed by Gregory Galumbiak. Do not see anyone by Katrina's name listed. Thank you. Then we'll move to Gregory Galumbiak of Jennifer Street in support, wishing to speak to be followed by Richard Muirhead.
Hello, am I audible?
You are.
I'm in favor of the second alternate. I'm one of ten former members of the Ad-Hoc Committee who have signed onto a letter and supported the resolution as it is written. And I agree a hundred percent with everything Ad-Hoc members Veronica Figaro and Keith Finley said. I would like to add that Ad-Hoc Committee Co-Chair Keith Finley has fully addressed concerns raised by PFC Council Jenna Rousseau. Everyone recognizes that the PFC has been an ineffectual oversight mechanism. The last time the PFC actually imposed discipline based on a complaint from a civilian was over sixty years ago. And in that case, the complainant was the mayor. That was when Police Chief Bruce Weatherly was fired for drinking on duty, driving under the influence improperly and proper use of the city-owned vehicle after he got drunk and crashed a squad. That's the only time I know of that the PFC actually imposed discipline, when a civilian brought a complaint to them. The independent auditor and civilian review board was in part envisioned as a means to strengthen the PFC mechanism by playing a complimentary role, including by conducting investigations and audits of police investigations, a role the PFC does not play. It would rectify the asymmetry that currently exists that favors police officers over civilian complainants, and it would help restore police accountability. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Richard Muirhead of Kent Lane in support, wishing to speak to be followed by Nathan Royco Mar. I do not see anyone with Richard's name on the list. Thank you. So then Nathan Royco Mar of Arena, Wisconsin, in support, wishing to speak to be followed by Tyson Vitale.
Good evening, members of the Madison Common Council and Mayor. My name is Nathan Royco Mar, a lifelong Madison resident and co-founder of the Community Response Team. As some of you may remember, on June fifth, two thousand and sixteen, then MPD Chief Mike Koval launched a full-frontal assault via his city-funded blog against the Madison Common Council in response to the consideration of and apparent support for spending more money on a study of MPD police policy and procedures. In it, he said, "You are being watched. Beyond notice, this is a preemptive first strike from me to you. I'm going to push back hard when MPD is constantly used as a political punching bag, and you're nowhere to be found." Aside from it being one of the most insubordinate public reactions any city of Madison employee has probably ever had for their elected bosses, he clearly knew how to galvanize this body. The request to increase the study's funding from the original fifty thousand dollars by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars passed by a nine-to-one margin after four hours of debate, in no small part motivated by the chief's contempt. While Koval may have been no more than a thin-skinned hothead, in the end, what he did do is demonstrate how to unify Madison's electorate. By now, you have all received thousands of pieces of mail, phone calls, and social media hits about the desire of your constituents to see a strong civilian oversight board and independent monitor created in faithful agreement with the original recommendations put forth in the Ad-Hoc Subcommittee's report, representing over four years of dedicated study and work. And now, we'll twist former Chief Koval's words into a more appropriate form, one that captures something many of you may now be feeling. Your actions are being watched, and beyond notice, this is but one in a relentless string of demands from us to you. We are going to push back hard when people of color are consistently used as police punching bags. Are you with us? This means that you will continue to feel the ever-increasing heat of a citizenry unwilling to look away, to compromise with half-stepping bureaucrats and self-dealing political careerists. If you twist a demand to suit your personal desires for power and control, we will come for you. We will expose you, and we will force you to stand and account for your unethical behavior. Thus this evening, I ask that you support the second alternate of Resolution six oh seven six four as written by Alders Kimball and Bedar, to work towards implementation of the recommendations for the independent monitor and civilian oversight board exactly as written in the Madison Police Department Policy and Procedure Ad-Hoc Committee Final Report dated October eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Keep the work group as listed in the second alternate Resolution sixty seventy, sixty seven six four to Alders Kimball, Bedar, and Moreland with the suspension of the rule so all community members can contribute freely without time on this work group during meetings. These Alders have no interest in altering or subverting the Ad-Hoc recommendations for civilian oversight and will write the appropriate ordinance and budget items to reflect that. Please do not expand this work group. Spreading the work group would slow progress with scheduling conflicts and slowing progress was mentioned as being of great concern to the council president and mayor in previous meetings. Keep all future handling of anything involving the Madison Police Department Policy and Procedure Ad-Hoc Committee Final Report open and transparent. No more power grabs or shady backroom deals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tyson Vitale of Dell Drive in support, wishing to speak to be followed by Bailey Wendelberger.
There is no Tyson in the attendee list, and there is no Bailey.
All right. So then next is Rachel Neeson of Langdon Street in support, wishing to speak.
There is no Rachel. She was here. Looks like she left.
Okay. And so then next is Shadira Kilfoy Flores of Wilson Street in support, wishing to speak.
Should, Shadira, you may have an unmute prompt on your end. There you are. You are unmuted. Are you there? Shadira?
Let's go on and see if we can solve the technical problems, and we'll come back. Next is Casu Avage of Grandview Boulevard in support, wishing to speak, representing Freedom Inc.
Am I on?
You are.
Okay. Yeah, my apologies for not, I thought I had registered, but I actually want to speak on two items. I may not be able to stay on. I'd like to make a comment in support of thirty-three and opposing forty-one, which is the one fifty police fund allocation, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. So, I mean, everybody said it, but I think for me, it's really hard to understand how we're still sitting here after eight months, after four or five years of investment of people who've been on this committee talking about what are best practices for Madison Police Department to follow and the civilian oversight board. I mean, I thought that that was a recommendation made eight months ago, and so the fact that we're still sitting here and people are dying all across the country and the whole country is on fire because something needs to change. Because black people are dying due to mistakes, as somebody said, someone who previously spoke before me, these are not mistakes. Can you imagine any of our organizations making a mistake by killing somebody accidentally and still getting funded like the police is getting funded? So no, I am definitely against any increase to the police budget. And especially fifty thousand for a launcher? For what? I definitely don't agree to that. And then the civilian oversight board, I'm not sure. I mean, I've been trying to follow as to some of the recommendations and some of the alternatives. But I definitely don't want to get more on any of these boards. He is not pro people of color, and he is always He is not pro people of color and he has always voted for the police. And I don't think somebody with that much biases should be sitting on any board that's going to make any recommendation, that's going to be overseeing any black and brown bodies. And I think that that's a mistake. And so, yeah, that's all. And I'm really disappointed in the fact that you have everybody, like you have everyone who sat on this committee for four years saying like, let's put this and implement this and we're still sitting here eight months later. So that's all.
Thank you, Kazua. Let's try again for Shady.
All right, you aren't unmuted.
Shady, you're unmuted on our end, but we can't hear you if you're trying to speak with us. So I'm going to ask that you, that maybe you can email all alders or log out and log back in. And if you, if you can return, we'll come back to you to speak.
Rachel is back in the attendee list, so we could go back.
Rachel Neeson, did you wish to speak again?
No, sorry, I must have registered twice.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, so we also have a number of registrants who have registered as available to answer questions. So we'll turn now to questions for any of our registrants. Any questions for any registrants from council members? All right, seeing none. President Carter, a motion?
Because this item failed at CCEC, I will refer to Alder Campbell to make a motion.
Thank you, President Carter. Alder Campbell?
Move approval.
And Alder Bedar? So moved by Campbell, seconded by Bedar. Alder Campbell, did you wish to speak?
Um, yes, I'll speak to this. So I feel like I've spoken to it about seven times already, but one last time, here we go. This, as many of the members of the public who called in, said, is just, this represents the council taking action on something we promised to do last August when we adopted the resolution to create this independent monitor and civilian oversight board. The ad hoc committee at the time was in the middle of writing their report and they felt that these two items were so critical to the success of every other recommendation that they forwarded these two plus the recommendation to institute a root cause analysis process within the MPD to us back in July. And we adopted those two items at our August meeting. So I'm just not going to belabor the point. Now is the time for us to do the work of translating the language in the recommendations into law by writing ordinances and by writing budget amendments to make it real. And I urge everyone to vote for this. It's beyond time we did this.
Thank you, Alder. Is there any objection by the body to trying one more time for Shadira Kilfoy Flores? Seeing no objection, let's try that. Shady, you should have a prompt to unmute on your end. Can we see if we can get her unmuted? She thinks her phone was muted.
Okay. I keep asking her to unmute, but it doesn't look like.
Shady, if you're, if you're on your phone using Zoom, you have to get into the sort of slide up a little bit to see the unmute button, which would be in the lower left corner of your Zoom on your phone. We're still seeing you as muted. All right, I apologize, Shady, but we're going to go on with the conversation. And again, encourage you to email the alders who will be checking to see what you might have had to say. All right, so thanks to the body for that indulgence. Is there any questions for staff or further discussion on the item? Seeing none. Is there any objection to me speaking from the chair? Oh, excuse me, President Carter. Go ahead.
I was just going to call for a roll call vote.
We'll do a roll call.
At the proper time. Thank you, President Carter.
Alder Balde?
All right, well, thank you, Madam Mayor. So obviously, first of all, I would like to get started by saying I totally completely disagree, uh, agree with all the testimonies that we've had from people who registered to speak on this issue. That the three orders who are identified to be part of this oversight committee are in fact very capable. I don't know anybody doubts that. So, but I also do believe from the testimonies that we've had from the people that this issue has a lot to do with black people and how they are police. And so it is important that even though we know this is way overdue and it needs to happen now, that the process of selecting those three people who serve in the committee is seen to be inclusive, the process of selecting them. Again, like I said, I do not doubt that the three orders are overly capable to be able to do the work that is identified as part of this resolution. But it is important that if things have to change, then business cannot be as usual. Business cannot be as usual. As black people, we must have to be respected. As black people, we must have to be part of the process. Somebody referenced that Madison is the most racist place in the United States. I don't know how factual that is. But I know Madison is a very liberal city. But if you look at what is happening to the black people in this community who constitute about seven percent of the population and over forty-three percent of arrests, yet something this important, I have almost always a hundred percent supported police reform. But something like this, the selection process is important to be transparent or at least be inclusive. I know there was an amendment at Finance where we wanted this membership to be increased to at least five. Even if it means some of the members can be, at like whatever you call them, if just for core purposes. That didn't happen. If you really have to address black people's problems, black people must be at the table. That is just a factual statement. For over four hundred years, black people's problems have been addressed and they have never been at the table. And that is why we are here today after four hundred years. So I personally have always supported police reform. And I support this oversight. I think it is way overdue. The fact that it is not inclusive, in my opinion, not inclusive in the sense that the three members are not diverse. But the process of getting them to be part of this group, in my opinion, is not inclusive and is not transparent. And so therefore, I am not going to vote for this. I am going to vote against it, not on the fact that I don't support it. I really think it should have been in place maybe as soon as ORR submitted their report. But here we are today, talking about black and their relationship with the police. This, I mean, of course, black and brown are generally the most impacted. But what happened to black people with regards to their relationship with police cannot be compared to any other even group, a set of groups. So obviously, I support this in principle, but I'm going to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Furman?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just first start and think the ad hoc committee that dealt with the Madison Police Department Policy and Procedure for all the work they put into it. And then also thank all the residents that mailed us. We got thousands and thousands of emails about this and also had a lot of people show up tonight. I'm angry about the process discussions. I, you know, I think typically this council does appoint, typically allow the council president to appoint alders. In this particular instance, the people that created this resolution decided on three individuals and then fourteen alders total are cosponsoring a resolution that makes it incredibly clear that they are, they are supporting a resolution that names these alders. This, this resolution has been out here, out in the wild for, for over two weeks now. There was a brief discussion at the, and unfortunately, ill-timed discussion at Finance last week where an alder, after we had already recommended approval, wished to have the consideration to change the count. That alder was told at that meeting that they had an opportunity to, at any point amend it later on. It didn't need to be at Finance. And it was even suggested that, that an amendment be shared with alders and the public before the next, before any next meeting, whether it be CCEC today or the council meeting. There was ample opportunity to amend. Then there was a discussion today at CCEC also pointing out that people were upset with process and we don't, we don't normally put alders in resolutions like we did with this. And again, I want to point out, we had fourteen people that cosponsored a resolution opposed to just asking the council president to decide. And again, plenty of opportunity for people to amend it. And we have an alder that disagreed with this selection process at CCEC and actually in the past has actually supported the creation of ad hoc groups with them on it. So this is not a new practice. And I would argue that this is a practice of, of appointing people that has a lot more support than previous, previously just letting one person decide. At CCEC, we ended way earlier than expected. Alders had an opportunity to amend and add more people. I don't, I don't wish, if somebody wanted to do that, they would have done it sooner. Nobody even bothered to do it at CCEC. Instead, people just, just keep saying no because they're unhappy with the selection process, not offering any amendments, not offering any other ways. When every, every person on this council has the ability to offer a different either set of people on that committee or a different number of people on that committee. So I'm incredibly disappointed at people using process to vote no for this. There is ample opportunity still at this moment for people to suggest changes. And so if somebody wants a change, please go ahead and suggest a change. I personally agree with the selection. I am a cosponsor and I, I feel strongly that, you know, people have made their voice known to throughout the public, that they were, you know, hoping that we would continue down what, what has been suggested. But anybody, I think, in my opinion, anybody who says, "I am not going to support this because I'm upset with who was picked," is ignoring the fact that they have the ability to change who was picked and change the composition even up until, you know, we take the final vote this evening. So I just wanted to point out process-wise, this process is wide open. If somebody has, you know, a different suggestion on the makeup or a different count, please, you know, try to get support for that this evening. You have the opportunity to do that. I'm hopeful nobody does that because I do like the selection and agree with the selection. But I do, I think it's incredibly unfair for people to say that they're going to vote for something when they have the ability because of process, when they have the ability to change the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Foster?
Thank you. I wasn't going to chime in, but I appreciate Alder Furman calling this out. And I just wanted to add since I really do care about process and I think it's something that we should be paying attention to. Just by way of example, I, along with Alders Campbell, Bedar, and Furman, wrote a resolution to create the ad hoc task force on, on structured city government implementation work group. We submitted that on February twentieth. It was adopted by the common council on March seventeen. And we just got the appointments to that on June fifteenth. So there was an example where we wrote a resolution. We did not identify the members and, and had them be the selection by the council president and it took three months from the time we adopted the resolution saying, yeah, we want this group, to actually having the members selected. Perhaps that's a little bit of an extreme example, but it's really the most present one. And so just in terms of why this was done in this way and why I support the way it was done and why I'm a little surprised to hear people crying about process. Everyone has stated that this work is urgent, that we need to get it done. We should have done this months and months and months ago. But it makes total sense in my mind and process-wise that the resolution has a membership in it so that we could pass it and we could go. So I'm, I'm also fully in support of this and I really appreciate all the work that everyone did to get it ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Balde?
So I would, at this moment, I mean, there's an opportunity presented to make an amendment. I would make an amendment to add two more members to the three identified alders to the resolution, if I can get a second, particularly from Alder Furman.
So that is a motion. Is there a second Alder Carter? Is that a second?
That's a second. But that's not while my hand is up, but that's a second.
All right, I'll, I'll leave your hand up, Alder.
Okay, thank you.
So it has been moved and seconded to add an additional two members to the work group. Alder Balde, do you wish to speak to that?
Yes, so like I said earlier, I mean, obviously, like everybody alluded, this is way overdue. And looking at the responses, no matter what somebody else does, obviously, the resolution will pass. But it is also important that we highlight some of the things that are not generally highlighted when it comes to dealing with black issues and things like that. So if we believe that in fact this is to address those issues, then I think it's important that we make the committee, whether these people, yes. So I'd say this before even we get to the vote. I am not interested to be part of the two people and I would not accept to be those two people. So reality is that if we really think that this is to address people of color's issues, particularly black people, then that includes more diversity. I mean, the committee as it is, is very diverse. I did three people. But I still think we should have two additional people as part of this committee.
Thank you, Alder. Alder, President Carter?
Thank you. I, I guess I covered several subjects at one time at this point. Let me just say that in recent council meetings that we have did internally, internally in ourselves that the respect for each other's opinion is low on the totem pole. We each have to vote what's in our heart. Whether that is not agreeing, whether that's agreeing with the process or not agreeing with the process, each one of us has to go home and put our head on that pillow and know that we did what was in our heart. So whether we agree with each other or not, we all are the body of the coming council. And the next day, we should be able to call each other and how you doing? Even though I know that's not going to happen, that's what could happen. So I want to say a couple of things. Alder Foster, your example is interesting because we also had an election and we had COVID during that same time. So even though it's that long, other things happening in our universe that, on that. One of the things about, I'm just going to talk about the process for two seconds. One of the thing about the process is, is a even playing field. When you know When you know what the rules are, we all can play the same game. I don't have a problem with the three people that are on the committee, but I would have liked whether it was the president or another alder to send out that invitation to say, would you like to join the alders work group? Not the ad hoc work group, but the alders work group. And they would still have the ability to pick the three people that they picked. But at least the invitation would have went out. And I don't think that's asking too much of, of anybody. I'm gonna, uh, I just wanna say a couple of things. Um, twice there was mentioned Koval's statement. And some of you might not have been here in two thousand sixteen. But Koval's statement, um, was a sword through all of our hearts that were here in this, in the chamber in two thousand sixteen. You are being watched and, and be on notice. This is a preemptive first strike from me to you. I'm gonna tell you that Alder Bedar shed tears that night. Chief Koval sat behind, uh, 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 Alder Balday, who, who made a comment that he was rather nervous with him sitting behind him. It was a traumatic, let me repeat that. It was a traumatic evening. Not one and just, not laissez faire. It was a traumatic evening for those of us who's been there. And to repeat that, twist the words around and make it more accommodating for you to say, when at the time we said to Koval, this was unprofessional, inappropriate, so on and so on. It was a traumatic evening. And although we passed the four hundred thousand for the, um, to hire the O I R, let's not forget that it was again, a traumatic evening. What I want from us from really this point forward, we have been called all kind of things and emails. As elected officials, we should have thick skin. But we have to have respect for each other's opinion. We have to have respect for each other's vote. Of course, we're virtual, so I don't expect shoes to be flying back and forth, hitting people when they don't agree with them. But I do wanna see that happen and we can do that. I'm not asking for much. I'm asking for us to respect each other. And if we vote against each other, so be it. That is from the heart. Because more times than, than not, we have agreed with each other. So let's be respectful. Thank you.
Thank you, President Carter. Alder Rumel.
Thank you, Mayor. Since technically we have a motion before us, I'll, I'll frame my comments and, um, I'm not going to support it, but if it passes, I'm sure I can live with it. Um, I just wanna remind the body how we got to this moment. And that was several alders put forward, uh, uh, a recommendation, the original motion, that kind of, you know, put together pre- previous members of committees and, and tried to kind of get some interim thing moving forward. And other alders said, we just don't wanna reuse all these committee members. We need to head toward the civilian oversight board, um, format that we've all agreed on is the way. And, and then there was an alternate that kind of tried to do that, but had no timing, nothing about like when that happens, how it happens. And so going into the moment of May thirtieth, when George Floyd was killed, we had no timeline really for any of this, other than we're gonna hire the independent monitor and then, you know, set up this board. That's, you know, that's months from now would have been until history changed in front of us. And the demand is like, we need to do something. And so Alders said, okay, what, what can we do? And, you know, maybe it was hasty and it wasn't quite the right thing. And the other alders had, okay, no, we wanna, we wanna get to a new way. And they had another version. And then finally it was like, how do we get to where we wanna go? And there was a compromise, uh, you know, it was a thing that happens under, in sausage making where people from the different sizes, how do we, how can we move forward? And they came up with this, uh, alder work group, which you know what? Brilliant idea. Thank you. I love it. Does it, three people make sense? Because at least by the logic of moving it along quickly, we wanna, we're responding to three thou- I'm gonna change my blog. Three thousand emails by the next time I write my blog. They just keep piling in. It's, it's incredible, people, and we know it is. We're in a moment of change. And we are, we've been heading towards change, although, you know, it's been said over and over again how sort of slow we are. But, you know, we're government. I mean, we're, we move fast and we move slow and we move fast and we move slow. Well, now we're stepping it up and I think we should. And I just wanted you to keep that in mind when you vote, because, you know, we're all invited. You know, one thing the, the, the president's work group on police and community relations innovated, and now many committees do it, is that suspension of the rules to make it more open-ended for a conversation. So not only could Alders come and talk, but the community doesn't just have to start out at the beginning for three minutes and then they're done. So I think we have a process that we can accommodate all points of view. If whatever model of numbers we move forward, and again, I'm still supporting the original. But like I said, you know, we're, we gotta move forward and let's keep our eyes on the prize. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Harrington McKinney.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, I'm going to add my, uh, voice to this because apparently, um, um, I'm in the center of this. Um, to the alder who, uh, said crying, quote, about process. And I'm gonna bring this up, and I specifically bring it up because of these items. And I said that, um, it is convenient for this body to change the direction that we're going when it's convenient. Um, when in the original writing or selecting the person who would write the final recommendations, um, there was a vote and a commitment and then they changed the rules to accommodate that body. Um, there was a revision to the already voted on number of, of individuals for the, um, ad hoc committee. And again, they changed the rules to add another body that was convenient. And so it is process. And so what we're looking at is is that if any committee can change the rules to make sure that it fits, uh, where they are, then the question is, what kind of body, um, are we looking at? We're talking about performance excellence. And one of the things that we talked about in performance excellence is having a process. When there is no process, there is confusion. That is the one, number one, um, tenet of, of, uh, process excellence. And let me just remind people of a couple of things. Um, number one is that I was, and so the vote was nineteen to one to increase, uh, to add three hundred thousand dollars to the original, um, uh, ad hoc committee to hire O I R. Um, I absolutely supported that. I have read every line in the recommendations and also the O R, O I R report, every line. The other thing that I wanna go through, and I wanna be systematic in that I go through, is is that many have forgotten is when the community response team was first initiated, I was at those meetings, I was at those meetings and I was in those circles. The only reason that I dropped out is because I lived far on the west side and was not able to get down to those meetings. I mentioned the fact that there was a lack of, of transparency because the alder just said sausage making. We have a president that was duly elected. Some voted for her, some did not. But she was duly elected as president of the Madison Common Council. And had in other instances, this work would have been generated or at least consulting the president of the, of the council. It was not. And so my vote is on the process. One of the things I always said is that let this not be another committee that sits on the shelf and gathers dust, because I've seen too many of those kinds of good, hard work just gather dust and sit on the committee. Um, my, um, my uneasiness, and let me, let me be upfront. If the number is increased to five, um, I'm not gonna serve on that committee because, um, whatever input that would make, I don't think it would be valued. But to select three individuals, two of which have said they've been actively engaged, and I went to those earlier meetings as well, actively engaged in the work of the ad hoc committee. And then, um, someone said that all three have been act, actively engaged. That is not true. Um, Alder, uh, Moreland was elected an alder in twenty nineteen. Um, but that is not the case. All are qualified. But when you talk about a transparent, open process and you keep throwing that in our face, and then what you're using is not an open, unbiased, transparent process, then I have a problem with that. And so to, to challenge me in terms of who I stand for and who I represent, um, I, historically, I'm not gonna go through that here. Um, but I don't need to defend it. I'll defend it when the time comes. But when I'm looking at a vote that I have to look in the mirror and says, does this fit for me? It doesn't fit for me. You cannot, you cannot change the rule and the goalpost when it suits you. And during this whole process, there's been time after time after time that we change the rules because it suits this process. I'm not crying that this is not fair. I don't cry. I don't need to do that. But when I, when, when I make a choice, um, the mentality of a thousand emails, when at the end of the day, um, if, when, when I understand that that makes a difference, I'm gonna come to the table with, with, um, not being biased. I'm gonna come to the table, uh, being with equity. I'm gonna come to the table with integrity. That's what I would have brought to the table regardless of what, what other people say. Uh, but I wanna make sure that we are clear is is that the reason that my votes have been no votes are on the opportu- on, on the very specific instances, when something that we voted on, after we voted on it, came back and was altered and changed because it did not fit within the guidelines of what the ad hoc committee did. It was on process. Do we need police reform? Absolutely. Do I wanna see, do, and, and some of the things that, that really, um, challenges me and I have to stop and say, wait a minute, they don't know who I am. If anybody thinks that it is okay for me to watch black males and women get killed by the police, don't even know me. Until you stand on the street and see the blood of another black young man in the middle of the street and you say, that could have been my child. Don't you dare judge me, because you don't have the right. I voted against this. No. I will still vote against it. No. Whether it goes forward or not, you got fourteen alders and that is privilege. That's great. Fourteen alders. But when I'm saying my no, I will stand with my no until I can be in a place where that no can become a yes. That no can become a yes, even though individuals have adamantly said, you are this, you don't represent us. That's fine. That's your opinion. But at the end of the day, I am absolutely going to do what I think is best and what's the right thing to do for collaborative community. I believe in restorative justice. I believe in humanity. And if that means that I have to look a little beyond what you're looking at, I'm going to do that. You know, where did you come with the impression that my saying no was intentional to derail the process and the forward movement? That is a created, made-up story that someone did or someone said. And so when you look at my vote, go back and look historically at the votes that have encompassed, encompassed over the last five years of this committee. And time after time, there have been adjustments. And so when I talk about process, I'm talking about going forward. That's what my commitment is. I will not be, um, um, the, the, having the committee increased to five, um, I can vote for that. I will not be one of those. I'm not gonna be, or even put my name forward to be one of the, the five. But if you're gonna have an open process, have an open process. If that fails, that's great. If you go back to the fourteen alders who are supporting the three, that's fine as well. But I'm looking for a venue where we can have open conversation of really looking at what matters to, um, uh, to black folks in Madison and why black lives do not matter. So, um, that's my statement. And for all of those who, and especially today, when, um, um, when I heard the term is is that I'm watching you, I'm going to shoot a bow. That disturbed me because if it was wrong for, um, Mike Koval to say, say it when he said it, it was wrong to be said again. And so with the back of me, does that make me uncomfortable? Does that make the hair on my head, now I'm shaved, stand up? Absolutely. And why does it make me upset? Is that those who proclaim to do social justice are now turning the tables and they're becoming the crowd that they say that they choose not to be. That concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue. The motion before us is Alder Balday's amendment uh, to add two alders to the work group. President Carter.
Um, I'm sorry, but that was an error in my part of raising my hand too quickly.
No worries, President Carter. So, um, the motion again is, uh, Alder Balday's amendment to add two alders to the work group. Uh, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the amendment? Alder Rumel, is that an objection? All right. So we will have a roll call vote. Thank you, Alder Rumel. Uh, so the motion again is to add two alders to the work group. All those in favor, I, those opposed, no. As your name is called, I will unmute you all and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Heck.
No.
Alder Heck, no. Alder Hennick.
Aye.
Alder Hennick, aye. Alder Campbell?
No.
Alder Campbell, no. Alder Lemer?
No.
Alder Lemer, no. Alder Martin?
No.
Alder Martin, no. Alder Moreland? I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
No. No.
No, okay. Alder Moreland, no. Alder Prestajakamo? I'm sorry, can you repeat that? Thank you. Alder Prestajakamo, no. Alder Rumel?
No.
Alder Rumel, no. Alder Skidmore?
Aye.
Alder Skidmore, aye. Alder Tierney?
No.
Alder Tierney, no. Alder Vervier?
No.
Alder Vervier, no. Alder Abbas? Alder Vervier, no. Alder Abbas?
No.
Alder Abbas, no. Alder Alboras?
No.
Alder Alboras, no. Alder Balday? Alder Balday, yes. Alder Bidar?
No.
Alder Bidar, no. Alder Carter?
Yes.
Alder Carter, yes. Alder Evers?
No.
Alder Evers, no. Alder Foster? I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
No.
No. Alder Foster, no. Alder Furman?
No.
The Furman, no. You have four ayes and sixteen noes.
With four ayes and sixteen noes, the motion fails. We're back to the main motion, which is approval of the second alternate. I have no other alders in the queue. President Carter, did you wish to speak now?
Uh, President Carter. I do wish to speak, but at one point you wanted to say something and I definitely want to hear that too.
Alright, President Carter, we could, we could trade back and forth. Um, I, I just wanted to briefly uh, add for um. Just a couple of informational things. Um, the alders, I hope you all received, oh, excuse me. I forget this part every time. I'm muting you all again. Uh, apologies. Um, it, so I just wanted to add a couple of of informational things. Uh, the alders should all have received an email from me indicating my support for this item. Um, and the referral of the ordinance and resolution regarding the independent auditor position. Um, and then I just wanted to confirm that I have asked staff from the city attorney's office. HR and finance to work with whatever work group you create um, tonight. Um, on these issues and and to share the the pre-existing work product. Um, with you for your consideration. Um. And uh, to let you know that that my office and staff stand ready to support the work group however needed. Uh, I also wanted to share um, with the council and the work group in particular. That over the past several days, I've had a number of conversations with members of the African American community. Who have expressed interest in the work of the work group. Um, and so at the appropriate time, I'd be happy to pass along. Um, the names of folks that have expressed that interest um, or to make connections for you um, as needed. Um, but I just wanted to make sure that you all knew that there were a number of people out there in the community who have, who are interested in. Communicating with the work group once it is um, up and meeting. Um, and I'm happy to to facilitate that as as needed. Um, so that's all. I just wanted to to make sure that that you all have that information. Um, as part of your discussions. So President Carter, I will turn it back to you.
Yeah. I just wanted to say that as the nation is trying to heal during this difficult. Uh, challenging time and with someone um, uh, a young man getting shot. Over the weekend, we too need a moment to heal. This had been very um. Painful process with over fifteen hundred emails. Um. Uh, the emails attacking your fellow colleagues is not okay. Um. Going forward, let's be more compassionate. Not just compassionate on what we want to pass, but compassionate to each other. We can't heal the city of Madison and we can't move the city of Madison, whether it's police reform. Whether it's public health, whether whether it's affordable housing, if there's not compassion. Between each of us. So whichever way this goes. And I meant to say this with with the altern- alternate, but whichever way this goes. I want you all to know that each one of us, and that means twenty. We're all going to work together. We're all going to work together to help uh. Uh, to help Rebecca and Alder, I'm sorry, Alder Campbell. Alder Bedar, Alder Moreland with this task that they have taken on. So I want you to remember, there's no winners here when we're trying to move the city forward. But there has to be compassion. With all of us, so that we can move the city forward. So that we can tell our constituents, we're working together, not pointing the fingers. Because we all have opinions and if you don't believe it, we can ask your family members, they will tell us. So we all have opinions, but we're going to work together. To move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, President Carter. Alder Alboras.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um. As a former member of the ad hoc committee myself, uh. Being the former co-chair, it it doesn't, it's not light what, how big this moment is. Um. You know, at least for the committee, you know, its inception started in late twenty fifteen and. Here we are mid twenty twenty with um. One of the largest and most, I should say, one of the cornerstone recommendations of the ad hoc committee. Um, before us and us taking action on it tonight. Um, so I personally want to take this opportunity to to thank the members of the ad hoc committee for. All of their their hours and years of service to the city and its residents. Um, in putting forth substantive, clear, good recommendations. For our city, um, to push police reform. Uh, thank you for the hard work that you did. Um. This was a a big investment on behalf of the city. Um, I do remember the evening when uh. Members of the ad hoc committee came to the council and said, the fifty thousand dollars that you originally allocated to us was not enough. To to fulfill our mandate because the scope of the inquiry. Of the study was so large and encompassed so many aspects of of the MPD that. Um, that fifty thousand dollars was just not adequate to find a competent. Um, vendor to do this study. Um, so I want to thank the council uh, back in the day that did that. And it was a very tumultuous meeting. I remember it very clearly. Um, so this is a a big moment that we're at. Um, this is us taking action. We're we're hearing the community. We're hearing the pain that's there. Um, we know that we need to take action, so this is my ask of. There there's many, many cosponsors on this second alternate. And so I want to just urge every. Council member to to vote in favor of this. Um, let's be unified. Um, let's have a unified front on this one for our city to show that we're listening. To show that we're taking action and to show that uh, the this rec- this. One of the cornerstone recommendations of this ad hoc committee, uh, we take it very seriously. Um. I definitely have full confidence in the folks who've been identified uh, for the alder work group. Um, I know that they'll they'll do the work that it takes to to vet this out. Um, it also has aspects of the independent monitor in there as well, so I'm really glad that that will be addressed. Um, when we take action on this today as well. Um, so with that being said, I think again, it's important. That we as a, as a council have a unanimous vote on this one. Um, I think that that would send a a big message. Uh, to the city and its residents. Um. Also, this isn't just a a cornerstone recommendation of the ad hoc committee. You look at um. Civil rights organizations across the country and this is something that they also ask and plead for as well when they do advocacy efforts across the country. Um, is is looking for independent oversight boards. Um, so again, I um, it doesn't. Way light, it doesn't weigh light on me the, for the moment that we're at here, particularly as a city. Um, with us taking action here. So again, I encourage all my colleagues to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Rumel.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I also share the comments that Alder Bor- Boris gave and I. That's how I got to know him was through his co-chairing the the committee and it was really. Uh, and a lot of work they did and I I share the thanks for their work and here we are after five years. And so. I'm always a person looking forward and I just want us to think now what comes up next. And that is. Our alder group will do their work, but at some point we're facing. A a budget that's just totally upside down. And the vision for this position is it's an independent. Monitor in its own office as a separate office. And the mayor, thank you for taking uh, back that. Trying to put it in your office. I think that was very wise of you and I appreciate it. But I think the question still is outstanding as we go, as our work group goes forward and we start to think about budget. You know, everything is up and could be cut, right? Like, how do we guarantee that this, this. Independent monitor will be independent in ways that are meaning, that appear and are meaningfully true. So that's one thing. And the other thing, someone mentioned earlier, I didn't write down their name, so I don't remember if it was just a a public speaker. About, um, maybe it was, it was Alder um, Campbell, when she talked about the three things we pulled out of um. At last August and one of them I just wanted to bring to your attention was the root cause analysis. And that is something that came to us. Or or, you know, we learned more about it through the ad hoc process and we had this amazing opportunity through the. Oh, I'm going to miss Quatron Center at Penn State. And they offered to have us be participants in their their program that would. Do a root cause analysis of an incident. So an incident. Could have be any number of things that we would select and from my understanding, now we're going to select the protests. As the root cause analysis, um, i- incident for the Quatron Center to help our. Our city and our team and everyone who works on that. So I think that's a real important thing. I'm not sure all alders know, I I learned about it. From the mayor and I just wanted to share it. So sorry if I took your breath away, Mayor, but I thought that was really important. And. You know, I I feel like progress is slow sometimes, but sometimes it speeds up. And I think we're in that historic moment where everything's speeding up and I just want us to make sure that. We're keeping our eyes on, you know, moving it forward and and working together like Alder Carter said, I do. You know, believe we're, we not always, won't always agree, but I think we agree that we need to. Uh, have an engaged city, a process with alders and the community and it has to be. One that is well and deeply represented. Uh, and so I look forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. I have no further alders in the queue. So the motion is to adopt the second alternate. Uh, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any objection to recording a unanimous vote in favor of the motion? President Carter, are you requesting a roll call?
Yes, I requested a roll call earlier.
I'm sorry, President Carter, that's correct. You did. I had forgotten. So we will have a roll call. And so all in favor of the second alternate, I, those opposed, no. As your name is called, I will unmute you all and the clerk will call the roll.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
Come back to me, please.
Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Heck, aye. Alder Hennick?
Aye.
Alder Hennick, aye. Alder Campbell?
Aye.
Alder Campbell, aye. Alder Lemer?
Aye.
Alder Lemer, aye. Alder Martin?
Aye.
Alder Martin, aye. Alder Moreland?
Aye.
Alder Moreland, aye. Alder Prestajakamo?
Aye.
Alder Prestajakamo, aye. Alder Rumel?
Aye.
Alder Rumel, aye. Alder Skidmore?
No.
Alder Skidmore, no. Alder Tierney?
Aye.
Alder Tierney, aye. Alder Vervier?
Aye.
Alder Vervier, aye. Alder Abbas?
Aye.
Alder Abbas, aye. Alder Alboras?
Yes.
Alder Alboras, aye. Alder Balday? I'm sorry, can you repeat that for me? No? Okay. Alder Balday, no. Alder Bidar?
Aye.
Alder Bidar, aye. Alder Carter?
Pass. Can you come back to me?
I will. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Foster, aye. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Furman, aye. Alder Harrington McKinney?
No.
Alder Harrington McKinney, no. Alder Carter?
Yes, thank you.
Alder Carter, aye.
When you minus the no, but when you ask for a unanimous vote. That's also saying, don't vote what's in your heart. And I want people not to follow, but to be true. I have no doubt that my colleagues would do the best job, no doubt that I would. Put in my twenty-five cents because inflation is no longer a penny. But I also have to think about. As Alder Furman said, talk about the process and how many times we had a chance to change the process. I'm going to vote no. My no. Is still a yes because I do support the three alders that have taken on this task. Thank you.
Okay, with four noes and sixteen ayes.
Thank you. Four noes and sixteen ayes, the motion passes. I'm going to mute you all again. Um, and that will take us on to. Item number forty-one. And we do have a number of registrants on item number forty-one. So we will start there. Our first registrant is Jen Newls of Post Street in opposition wishing to speak. To be followed by John Newman.
Hi there. So the need for a new generator that's in this resolution. Was pretty clearly presented and so I would have happily supported that. However, tacking on a request for more weapons is absolutely not something I can get behind. Now, the requested weapons aren't very well specified in here. There's been some speculation. But they are definitely addressed in oblique terms like less lethal. And intervention equipment, which I get is the technical term, but let's be sure to call them what they are as well though, which is weapons. Designed to seriously injure and incapacitate people and even kill them. That's why they're called less lethal. Now, it's been previously stated in the response to the initial recommendations from last year. That the weapons require initial and ongoing cost of training. Obviously, you want them to be trained. But as we saw on the weekend of May thirtieth. The actions of the MPD are violent, unprofessional, and even in violation of their own policies. So this is not a crew that we can be trusting with more tools for violence. Now beyond that. We have in motion actions to create the citizens oversight board. So right now we need a firm stance that not a single dime will be spent. On violence-based equipment until those citizens have had a chance to determine what's appropriate for funds and for policies. Plus, the amount requested is fifty thousand dollars. That's enough to pay for a social worker or a resource advocate. Or something that our community needs way, way, way more than more weapons. So I strongly oppose this resolution due to its inclusion of the new weaponry and I ask you all to reject it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next is John Newman of Algoma Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Elijah Petty.
I do not, I do not see anyone by that name.
Alright, uh, Elijah Petty of Raymond Road in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Alexandra Wilburn.
I do not see Elijah either.
Alexandra Wilburn of Gorham Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Stephen Ulberg.
Alexandra is here.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Uh, thank you very much. I'm Alexandra Wilburn. I have lived in Madison for about a year. I uh, got my my bachelor's degree in Milwaukee where I live for six years. I am calling to give, give. a resounding opposition to give the Madison Police Department the $50,000. Uh, so you have to say no to the entire bill. I find it backwards to begin giving funds to the police department before the civilian oversight committee is instated. Uh, as the police chief has recently demonstrated, uh, he's unable to unlearn the violent authoritative law and order practices that were designed by wealthy white supremacists who wanted to squash uprisings against, uh, while labor movements in the 1930s, the civil rights movement, the anti-Vietnam war protests. Uh, the police chief said he listened to the community and after listening to the community in his statement, he said, "This project will fund less lethal impact projectile launchers, tasers, ammunition equipment and training for new instructors or armorers." Uh, so in listening to, "We don't want more weapons of violence," he is still looking for weapons that can be, can be lethal, that can blind. To launch into a crowd of largely peaceful protesters due to a fractal percent of physically aggressive members is the conclusion he came to, to still use chemical warfare, uh, and probably just slower rubber bullets. He did not hear and understand the immense injustices his department has facilitated and the police structure in general has facilitated. If you want to reduce the criminal, uh, what we criminalize in this country, this 50,000 should go towards children with food insecurity, those with housing insecurity, those who have been sexually assaulted and have, and have not been able to, uh, get mental, real accessible mental health care because research shows that this sort of trauma is what causes people to self-medicate, is what causes people to be truant, is what causes people to think they, that the best life they have is to steal it or do fraud. The police, one of these funds for these weapons demonstrates the need to be policed by a civilian body and we need to move even further to where the civilian body is in charge of hiring, firing, and discipline in order to give the proper democratic check on law enforcement agents in our community. The police commissions in-house and the in-house investigations hasn't worked in the past and it isn't working now. The policing system has historically and currently uh, been in charge of investigating their own officers and it's an illogical system of justice. That, that is because the police practices and structures such as using these quote-unquote less lethal uh, were designed, uh, oppress. Can I talk for thirty more seconds?
If you could wrap up, please.
I will wrap it up. Uh, these practices of using these quote-unquote less lethal were put in place by uh, during the reconstruction era and the governor that was of the, was during the Civil War, did not want to go to war with the South, didn't care that was anti-slavery and uh, appointed people that were essentially pro-slavery and wanted to do everything they could to keep the black and brown communities uh, down. I urge everyone to reject this $50,000, uh, to give this violent unchecked force more weapons. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Stephen Ulberg of Keys Ave in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Liv Jackson.
I do not see anyone by either of those names.
Okay. Uh, next is Clinton Ott Ford of Chandler Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Manker Donway.
Thank you. Uh, the legislative history on this item shows that it was introduced on May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty, one day after George Floyd's death, which demonstrates the current Madison Police Department's priority to suppress dissent. Also, as many have pointed out, less lethal does not mean non-lethal. But more importantly, it does mean violence. I do not want to expand the police's ability to do violence to me as a protester and more important to my neighbors of color, especially at this time when the community and the nation is demanding a decrease in police violence. Please reject this item. Please put funds, at least $50,000 elsewhere that will work to deescalate violence. Thank you.
Thank you, Clinton. Next is Manker Donway of Mill Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Amelia Roikomar.
I do not see anyone by that first name. I do see Amelia.
Amelia Roikomar of Arena, Wisconsin, in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Bennett Brazelton.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Um, I, I am urging you to, uh, vote this down. I, I don't think that any, uh, any weapons of any sort should be purchased without the support of communities most impacted. Um, that includes, uh, members that will be on the civilian oversight board. Um, I understand why less lethal is being suggested. As a, uh, someone who attended the civilian police training academy, uh, several years ago, I got to shoot something similar to this. Um, I have no doubt that it could break someone's sternum. Uh, I think that the way it has been described and put forth is the reason why we are pushing so hard is because it isn't honest. There's no policy in place that we've agreed to. There's no consideration for the people who stare these down. None for what they think, for what their concerns are. Zero consideration. So when we're talking about compassion and when we're talking about respect, we have to remember that compassion, respect, and respect aren't just about what we say. It's how we vote. It is the alternates we introduce. It is the resolutions we cosponsor. Compassion is about action. Respect is about action. Go ahead and ask anybody walking down the street that if you say, "I believe all people should have cars" and then you cosponsor or vote for a resolution that will take the car from the person you're talking to, ask them if they feel your compassion and they feel your respect. We are asking for the people who are most impacted to be heard and to be part of the conversation and the decision-making. And this move by Chief, uh, uh, Wall and oftentimes the unconditional support by a few white men on this council for the things that the police want to do, you are the reason why oftentimes people who are not white men and benefiting most from this system are afraid to vote against what's going on, are afraid to vote against the system. You've got to change. And whatever you've got next, from the Police and Fire Commission to whatever else you send our way, we're ready, we're done. The luxury of waiting is over. You will no longer be centered in everything.
Amelia, that's your time.
Control the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bennett Brazelton of Karen Court in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Matt Rowe.
Uh, there is no Bennett Brazelton here, but, um, Matt Rowe is here.
Matt Rowe of Inglewood Hall Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Annalise Collier.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Hi, my name's Matt Rowe. I've lived in Madison my entire thirty-year life. I'm here today to oppose resolution number six zero six five eight and the MPD's request for a new, for a new, excuse me, forty-millimeter canister launcher for all precincts. I do not in any way believe that we need to plunge any more funding into the arming of our already over-militarized police forces. This goes tenfold when talking into consider, taking into consideration that these weapons, yes, weapons of oppression will be used predominantly on the black and brown members of our communities. I have seen Madison Police Department park a shiny new armored truck-mounted LRAD at the farmer's market. This is a weapon made to disperse massive violent crowds in war zones and the MPD used it that day for a photo op with children, only to be parked in a garage somewhere ready to be deployed on likely peaceful protesters in the next coming weeks. Tubbs, I hope you're listening because you are being watched. Madison has a problem with over-arming its police forces and make no mistake about it, this is no different. On Saturday, May thirtieth of this year, I watched as riot police on State Street use tear gas, a direct violation of the Geneva Protocol of nineteen twenty-five on panicked innocent civilians running, running for safety. I also witnessed as rubber bullets were fired improperly against the very same civilians by firing directly at fleeing protesters' heads, making them far more deadly or causing permanent damage. Note that rubber bullets are meant to be bounced off the ground to lessen their velocity. And I dare you to find any instance where the cop is, where a cop has done this correctly. Take your time, I'll be here for a while. The point is, we already have an over-funded and overly militarized police force and here you are trying to put more tools in the, of oppression and violent escalation in the improperly trained hands of the law. Why is it this city's knee-jerk reaction to reach for more armaments when you, when we should be focusing on more, more on the use of minimum force necessary? If we had that type of policy in the first place, Tony Robinson might still be alive today. The addition of yet more projectile launchers, reed guns, is a tone-deaf attempt to quell the masses of people crying for change while you ask for more bloodshed. Shame on you, Mayor Rhodes Conway, and shame on any member of this council in favor of this horrible addition to our city's budget. Your names will go infamously on record as supporters of the violent system that got us to this point in the first place. Shame, shame, shame. I would like to take the rest of my three-minute allotment for a moment of silence to honor Madison's own Tony Robinson, whose life was taken because of this council's historically complicit inaction to the violent and brutal uses of force by our officers of the law. Fire Matt Kenny. Our moment of silence begins now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Annalise Collier of Blankton Road in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Casu Avage.
Hi, um, I responded to this call by Freedom, Inc. to come speak at this, um, at, against this item. Um, because I think it's important that white people speak up in, um, in support of our black and brown community members. Um, we should not be using this money to, to add more weapons to the police force. We should be using it for supportive social services for the community, um, especially for things like housing and food insecure populations, um, which is a huge problem in Madison. Um, uh, as others have pointed out, the, these are just called less lethal, not non-lethal because they do, they do cause harm. Um, and we should really be shifting funds from the police to social services, not um, adding more items to the police for, um, seemingly incremental change. Um, I also wanted to add that, uh, Madison has a problem with, um, black, black brain drain. Um, and that's not going to be the only people leaving Madison, uh, if we don't do something to really shift our resources from militarized police to social services. Um, I've been here, uh, just about four years now. Um, and I love Madison. I want to stay, but I, I cannot in good conscience, conscience, stay in a city, uh, put down roots here if we continue to, um, just give lip service to racial justice and uh, refuse to make any actual movement forward. So please, please listen to the community and, um, Freedom, Inc. when they say we need to defund the police, including this specific item of not allowing the police more weapons, whatever we call them. Thank you.
Thank you, Annalise. Next is Casu Avage of Grandview Boulevard in opposition wishing to speak representing Freedom, Inc. to be followed by Gregory Golembiak.
Uh, they are no longer here, but Gregory is.
Uh, Gregory Golembiak of Jennifer Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Rachel Kent.
Hello, am I audible?
You are.
Community support for acquisition of additional forty-millimeter launchers has evaporated given indiscriminate use of less lethal weapons during Madison protests on the weekend of May thirtieth through June one. In late two thousand eighteen, the community response team with which I'm affiliated indicated supportive MPD purchase of additional less lethal weapons, including forty-millimeter launchers. We envision their use in very restricted, specific circumstances to avoid firearms use. Forty-millimeter sponge rounds have more accurate trajectory and pose less risk of penetrating injuries than shotgun beanbag rounds. However, on the weekend of May thirtieth through June one, less lethal weapons were used against protesters indiscriminately and in violation of MPD policy. MPD policy explicitly states that, quote, "OC spray," also referred to as pepper spray, "is not to be, quote, not to be used against subjects who are offering only passive resistance," end quote. However, on the weekend of May thirtieth through July one, through June, June one, it was repeatedly and consistently used against peaceful protesters that were not engaged in active resistance or the threat of active resistance. For example, as reporter Dylan Brogan wrote, quote, "Officers in riot gear formed a line around six P M. at the intersection of Johnson and State Streets to clear people who were blocking traffic. Police started spraying pepper spray demonstrators at close range and walked forward to push people into the three hundred block of State Street. Brittany, a UW-Madison student, was hit with mace while trying to help someone who fell on the street as officers marched toward them. Quote, "I was trying to help this girl up and they sprayed mace right in my eyes," says Brittany, whose eyes were bloodshot and barely able to open. Fuck, my face hurts," end quote from the article. There's a ton of video of such use that's in flagrant violation of policy and a huge number of witnesses to it. In additional, in addition, forty-millimeter sponge rounds were used. A friend, J T Jenkins, who attended the protest to provide medical assistance in video document events, wrote me the following, quote, "I personally witnessed two youth take rubber bolts, technically forty-millimeter sponge round, to the face. But we were being pushed so hard by the cops, I couldn't stop to get the bolts from the ground or interview the kids. But yeah, one had an open wound above the eyebrow. MPD policy states, quote, "Impact projectiles will not be used in crowd control situations. Impact projectiles will not be used to move or disperse crowds," end quote. Moreover, MPD policy states that deployment of impact projectiles at the face, head, or neck is considered deadly force. So there were clear blatant violations of state of policy. I don't think that's disputable. Yet I've heard no acknowledgement of that from Chief Wall and no indication that MPD is investigating or seeking to impose accountability. Under MPD policy, when an officer observes another officer using or violating force policy, we're supposed to intervene to stop it and report it, but that doesn't appear to have happened. So MPD officer actions are not constrained by policy and there's no accountability. These weapons can cause great harm. A Minneapolis reporter was permanently blinded in one eye by a forty-millimeter sponge round. A San Jose black activist who actually trains police in racial bias suffered a ruptured testicle from a sponge.
But it's time.
And I have twenty more seconds.
You need to wrap up, please.
Um, these cause frequent injury in many places. Under current circumstances, purchase of additional less lethal weapons would appear very difficult to justify. I urge you not to approve funds for this purchase at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rachel Kent of Rutledge Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Jill Cassidy.
Uh, Rachel is not here, but Jill is.
Jill Cassidy of West Washington Ave in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Simon Taylor.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I've lived in Madison, Wisconsin for almost two decades and have been a homeowner in Madison for sixteen years. I'm an educator and researcher. My wife and I live right off the Capitol Square in District Four. As an active voter, this is my first time to speak before the common council. But this is an unprecedented and pivotal juncture for Madison, the town I want to be proud to continue to call home. I asked to speak on agenda number forty-one and specifically petition number six oh six five eight, not merely because I oppose it, but because you must. Make no mistake, the eyes of the nation and frankly, the world are in every city council weighing right now how to meet the moral challenge of this moment. If it was once possible to pretend not to know about police brutality, police murder, and let's be clear, police rioting, it's impossible to do so now. Thus, the decision before you of whether to increase an already inexcusable police budget of five million by a hundred and twenty-five thousand for a generator and so-called police intervention equipment project just after the week of Black Lives Matter and defund the police protests catalyzed by the police murder of George Floyd, but also in memory of Tony Robinson and just before the nationwide demonstrations planned for June teenth, cannot be innocent. And it won't be judged as innocent. The question before you is thus not just a question of an allocation that we could dismiss as a comparatively tiny sum relative to the mountain of five million. relative to the mountain of five million. But this can't be judged and will not be judged as merely a budget item, whether comparatively large or small. The Seattle City Council has already banned the use of what are variously called riot control agents, R C As and crowd control weapons, C C Ws, which include kinetic impact projectiles such as foam grenades and rubber top bullets, chemical irritants commonly known as tear gas, a name which belies their often lethal effects, water cannons and distortion devices such as flashbang or stun grenades. Make no mistake about the stakes here. In this week and at this juncture in history, to go in the opposite direction and not curtail or abolish, but consciously make the decision to increase investment in riot control weapons is to send a clear message. And make no mistake again, that message is not merely a racist, anti-black message. To make a budget allocation for increasing riot control weapons at this juncture is to sign the check of an ugly commitment to black death. And this is not hyperbole. There are moments in history when such allocations could be scuttled or covered over by a rhetorical commitment to peace and safety. This is not one of those. If the prospect of this moral judgment of how well you live, your ostensible values doesn't compel you, consider the promise you made to peace and safety. Let me be clear here about what my white privilege affords me and what it doesn't. I'm an educated, white homeowner able to work from home in the midst of the COVID nineteen pandemic. And that position, living right by the state Capitol, affords me a particular advantage.
I'm sorry, Jill, can you wrap up, please?
Yes, I can say from experience that it's not merely that your expensive policing doesn't make me feel safe. Your expensive policing is actively making me and those I love unsafe. Where was your fantastically expensive policing when white protesters against Governor Evers' safeguard at home orders were using the street under, right under our windows to assemble with open AK forty-sevens? I can tell you where they were because they were pointed up at our windows and the police were nowhere to be seen. I'm, that, conclude and say that studies demonstrate clearly, um, that these kinds of weapons actually escalate the violence. Thus, don't be on the wrong side of history using tools that are clearly there, um, only to, uh, repress protest. They don't make, um, situations less violent, um, or create the peace and safety we're promised.
Thank you. Next is Simon Taylor of Bellevue Ave., uh, in Seattle, Washington, in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Anne Murphy.
Hi, Madison, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Uh, my name's Simon, uh, I'm a nurse, um, uh, calling to testify from Seattle. I'm, uh, exhausted, caring for COVID nineteen patients, but this is important work, so I wanted to come speak today to share some good news from Seattle and also to share about a hard one cautionary tale. Um, I want to start by saying that the nation is looking to you. Um, I'm, people from all over the country are watching and I am here to represent them. Um, the votes you make today on this issue will show how much you believe that black lives matter. Um, when someone asked me to speak here to Madison, um, I was astonished to hear that it was not to speak about the success we recently had in Seattle, but instead, uh, uh, and, and help you guys get there, but instead that you were working towards the purchase of more weapons right now. I was quite astonished. Um, so as you just heard, i- in Seattle, literally yesterday, our city council unanimously voted to ban the police department from using so-called less, less lethal weapons like blast balls, tear gas, pepper spray, the exact kind of projectiles that your department is looking to bloat and purchase. Um, ban the use of chokeholds too. Um, so that's really good news for us. The cautionary tale is that that vote didn't happen in a vacuum. Um, we have three police oversight bodies, um, one similar to the one you just voted to enact today. Um, and, uh, every time they've moved forward towards oversight, the police union has pushed back really hard, so be ready for that. Um, and, um, just, uh, this is a little bit emotional for me, this next piece, um. Our police department has been, um, under supervision from the federal government due to our history of violence. Um, last month, they asked to be released from that supervision, saying that everything had changed, that their culture was good and healthy. The very next month, they erupted in violence against largely peaceful protesters in a highly militarized way. They shot, excuse me, they shot Abrina in the, in the chest with a so-called less lethal flash grenade projectile like the ones you were seeking to buy. Our team of community medics on the scene lost her pulse. While they were applying CPR, the medic tent was advanced on by the police and also destroyed. The team ran her on a stretcher and continued CPR. Three times over the course of the night, they lost her pulse. She barely survived. Statements of goodwill by the police that these weapons are for the purpose of keeping people safer is not acceptable. That implies that if they didn't have these weapons, they would be killing people. Even with these weapons, we are losing the pulses of our, of our precious community members.
I'm sorry, Simon, that's your time.
We're, I'll wrap up. Madison, the whole nation is looking to you to show us that you believe black lives matter. Don't let what happened here happen to you. Follow the leadership of the Seattle City Council and ban the use of these weapons instead of funding them.
Thank you, Simon. Next is Anne Murphy of Pauline Avenue in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Aditha Pugazendi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm gonna begin by giving some time of silence to people who have been harmed by these so-called less lethal weapons, um, either at protests or in many other circumstances. I didn't go to protests on the first few nights. Um, and that was partly because I was afraid. And I wasn't afraid of protesters. I was afraid of police. And I was afraid of what they would do. And I was right to be because Madison police used tear gas. And if I'm hearing this correctly, they fired so-called sponge bullets or whatever that is. And people were hurt, so this was violence. It was totally unacceptable. It's offensive to the humanity of people. It's, it's offensive to humanity. So I urge the council members to vote down this measure. Um, I urge this council to not approve any additional funding for police. Um, until the Oversight Board is enacted. Um, and I mean, so many people who was spoken before me have said so much more eloquently um, what I feel. Um, so let's pause again. Because I feel like we all need to take these moments of silence and contemplation and reflection over the moral choices, um, that are made in these council meetings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anne. Our next speaker is Adita Pugazendi of High Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Patrick Johnson.
Hi, City Council, my name is Aditya Pugazendi. I hope you've all been listening to all the poignant remarks made by the speakers who came before me. The police claim these weapons are needed to avoid using lethal force, but we, as we've seen over the past few weeks in Madison and across the nation, the non-lethal designation only empowers them to use these weapons more indiscriminately and cause more violence with less scrutiny from the media and public officials. If the police really want a non-lethal fish, uh, lon- non-lethal alternative, they should consider demilitarizing and disarming rather than showing up fully armed in riot gear. It would also save them fifty thousand dollars. Why should we trust them with additional weaponry of any kind after seeing them attack and tear gas peaceful protesters unprovoked with no regard for all the bystanders who are also hit by these weapons, including many homeless individuals downtown? In effect, these weapons are being requested in order to be used against future anti-police protests. And this is, I feel, a naked attempt by the police to more effectively suppress dissent from us in the future. There is currently a popular movement in the city to defund and demilitarize the police, and this agenda item would effectively do the opposite. I think I speak for most of us in attendance tonight when I say that we will make sure that any alder who does vote for this measure will not win another election in the city. I know one of the alders has proposed an amendment to strike the weaponry clauses from this item, but leave the rest of the request standing. But in my opinion, this is insufficient. The council should not vote in favor of any measures that would support police operations going forward and grant additional funding, even if it's just going towards a generator and not any weapons. Any alders who claim to support the Black Lives Mo- Matter movement and the goals of protesting Madison should refuse to cooperate with M P D requests of any kind. And this is the bare minimum right now for anyone who claims to stand against the institutional racism and oppression of the police. The only truly principled stance here is to vote down any request from M P D which is an institution that harasses and oppresses so many marginalized communities here in Madison, including the poor, the homeless, the disabled, the transgender community, and especially, of course, black residents. And in my opinion, it doesn't matter if it's a seventy-five thousand dollar generator or five dollar stapler. I believe our elected officials must refuse to grant any request from the police. Otherwise, you will continue to be complicit in the oppression that they perpetuate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Patrick Johnson of Grant Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Alex Dewey.
Hi, Council, thanks for having me. I'm a graduate of U W Madison and current physician assistant student at U W Madison. Many of us have heard the public's resounding call to defund the police. Rather, regarding an argument earlier referenced by a respondent, I'm not sure it's accurate to complain defunding the police with danger and funding the police with safety. I protested in Ferguson and Saint Louis five years ago after Officer Wilson murdered Michael Brown. And some many cities across the country introduced reforms like this one under discussion. The company that makes these projectiles has made millions. So my question for the council is, why are we moving forward with more money for the police? While these less lethal projectile launchers could provide an alternative for police to utilize, I don't think they're a wise piece of equipment to fund. First, given that Madison police have not shown a good history of de- escalation or provided a safe response to emergent situations in the past, I don't trust their ability to properly utilize these devices. More importantly, I think that this idea simply serves as a Band-Aid solution to try to make Madison police appear safer and less lethal while consuming funds that could be used elsewhere. Communities deserve control of the police. Right now, communities are being overpoliced, criminalized and dragged down by a carceral state. With more funding for social services, there would be less of a need for less for lethal or any force from police in the first place, and that's where our focus should be. We need to de- defund the police and move toward the cultivation of better, healthier futures for our citizens. I urge you to oppose this action, reeling the police's financial power and focus on funding social services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alex Dewey of Branch Street in Middleton in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by, hopefully, technology will help us, Shadira Kilfoyle Flores. Alex?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, and thank you for your time. I've lived in the Madison area my entire life. I'm here to speak in opposition to these funds for least, less lethal weapons. Police in the United States do more harm than good. It's nothing personal. We live in a highly militarized society that terrorizes the poor, racial minorities, sexual minorities, and others on the margins of society. And police forces today just happen to be the first and last resort for terrorizing them. Our society has failed to deliver social services to Americans during two recessions and failed to deliver social and failed to deliver healthcare to Americans during a pandemic. Police are not the sole cause of these issues, of course, but they are the ones with the guns as well as tasers, rubber bullets and tear gas. They're the ones who claim to serve and protect us on our roads, in our schools, in our neighborhoods. Police just happen to be the strongest domestic enforcers of the failed status quo and must bear some accountability for that failure. Again, it's nothing personal. As for this vote, and as others have well noted, less lethal is basically a marketing euphemism, uh, taken from tasers specifically, so they could avoid the term non-lethal, which of course is patently false. When you hear the term less lethal, it's probably a good idea to just hear the word lethal. Rubber and plastic bullets can be lethal, other projectiles can be lethal, tasers can be lethal, tear guts can be lethal. Of course, they don't have to be killed to be effective. Rubber bullets can maim, tasers can electrocute, and tear gas can even make the coronavirus worse by damaging lung tissue. That's one of the reasons they're so great at crowd control, because they're not just unpleasant to experience, you might get seriously injured too. Better to stay home. Um, to sum up, this proposal is to spend city money to terrorize the skin, lungs, eyes and brains of residents who are simply expressing their opposition to that very force of terror. It's hard to think of a more fitting demonstration that police in our society need to be radically curtailed, whether that be through budget cuts, reallocation of their roles, defunding, demilitarization or abolition. This is a sick nation right now, badly in need of a compassionate reimagining and restructuring of our society. Uh, this national sickness will never heal so long as police and prisons are our social services of first and last resort. I know this is not a lot of money we're talking about, but let's put our heads together and figure out something better to spend our resources on. Just about anything would do. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next is Shadira Kilfly Flores in opposition wishing to speak of Wilson Street to be followed by C J Terrell. Shay, can we make your technology work?
Shay, if you wanted to, um, try calling the number that was listed in your registration confirmation email, um, that will, um, will certainly should work, but, um, doesn't look like we're hearing you.
All right, so we'll come back and try again there. Uh, so C J Terrell of Elderberry Road in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Paige Mayfield.
Can I be heard?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I'm C J Terrell, uh, I'm thirty-one years old. I was born and raised here in Madison, Wisconsin. Uh, first and foremost, Satya, uh, I take offense to you using uh, conversations with the black community as a political tool. I hope to hear you, uh, remove that from your rhetoric. Um, I feel better every day regarding shouting you down at the protest. Uh, you said you supported the Black Lives Matter movement, but you have instituted a curfew, uh, recorded a secret police video, uh, showing support to them during this movement. Then we got your foot in your mouth a pop. Um, and then, uh, while Minneapolis is dismantling the police and cities all over the country are defunding the police, uh, we have you as a sponsor to a resolution that, uh, is hiding money for crowd control weapons for the police. Uh, you're being two-faced, we see you. Um, to the council, please do not follow the weak leadership of your mayor. We need you to listen. We need you to support us. We need you to support our community without violence. We need this now, and if you aren't with us, we need you gone. Uh, we will not be stopped. This is in response to protests regarding police experience nation, the police brutality that black people experience nationwide. You all heard the previous statistic regarding the black percentage of the population versus the percentage of arrests. This is proof of something. Either you believe that the police are racist or you believe that black people are inherently more criminal. There is no middle ground. Period, point, blank. Um, in terms of how this will be used, uh, the police in Madison, Wisconsin, tear gas Art Paul Schlosser. Does Art Paul Schlosser, uh, represent a violent and dangerous member of this community to any of you? Um, I, I, uh, assure you that that is not the case. And it's just an example of how the police intend to use these tools against us. Uh, Lastly, I would very much like to let you know that you need to step, uh, you need to step to let you know that you need to step, uh, you need to step forward with Minneapolis. You need to do more than just what's been done at this meeting. You need to dismantle the police. You need to vote down anything that gives money to the police. Um, and, uh, I recommend a roll call vote. If somebody would require a roll call vote for this, so that we can hold any alders that, uh, would give the police more tools of violence and destruction against our community what they deserve. Uh, so if you can please do that, that would be, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Paige Mayfield of Williamson Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Chris Olson.
Um, we do have, uh, Shadira on the phone if we wanna try that.
Yes, go ahead, Shady.
Can you finally hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank goodness. Hi, everybody. So, um, I, I did wanna speak, you know, on the last agenda item because I went through the entire PFC conference, you know? Um, something that has been brought up has been the night that Chief Koval freaked out on any, everybody. Um, he particularly freaked out on Sharon. Irwin and I was a witness to that, where he, you know, um, ended up being found guilty of, um, he went against the rule of conduct, the code of conduct for, for officers. And so, not, not just, what we're talking about is we're talking about abuse of authority and, and the need to hold people accountable when they abuse that authority that they've been given. And my daughter was one of those people who were on State Street. When she saw her, my friend Sharon Irwin being sprayed in her face, she tried to help her, and then she was sprayed in her face. And now the last two weeks I've spent with two dozen young people, ages thirteen to twenty-two, doing nothing more than heal because of the damage that MPD has caused in this city repeatedly, over and over, from physical violence to emotional violence. You know, when some man walked by and kicked her, don't eat, was her first in, her first instinct was to call the police, and I tried to talk her out of it. When the police showed up, they discovered that this man was having a mental breakdown, and their solution was to drive him to a faraway McDonald's rather than taking him somewhere to get help. We need help as a city. We need to do better as a city. The Police and Fire Commission is not sufficient in holding officers accountable of abusing their authority. The Police and Fire Commission is, 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 the whole process is, is not set up so that civilians can have any form of justice. And let me tell you, Ms. Barbara McKinney, I remember on Williamson Street when my daughter was in front of eleven twenty-five where her friend was killed, and she said, "This is not what democracy looks like." You hushed her. You hushed my black daughter's voice. And over and over again, you continue to hush young black people's voice. Shame on you, Barbara McKinney. I am truly disappointed because you have the opportunity to help uplift these young people and to give them hope and to give, provide them with safety. That's why these kids are hanging out on Seat Street every night, and I stay down there until one to two o'clock in the morning to make sure they're okay with my medic kit. They all say, "Hi, Mom, hi, Kitty." So, if you think that your money, that our money should be spent to buy more weapons to hurt these black babies, you're sick. You're sick and you're deranged if you think that's how our money should be helping these kids. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Shady. Next is Paige Mayfield of Williamson Street in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Chris Olson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Well, I just wanna say, um, I've been a lifelong Madison resident, excuse me. And I have been disappointed and ashamed to live here as soon as I became conscious of what it meant to live here. And every night, I go to the protests downtown. I see protesters feeding the homeless people that live there. And I wonder what a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars couldn't do to help them. The access that they lack to healthcare, to food, to secure housing. Why is it going to weaponry, which we've seen forty millimeter sponge rounds used across the nation to lethal ends? Permanently blinding people, permanently maiming bodies. And for what? I yield the rest of my time and the moment of silence to remember Tony Robinson. I live in his neighborhood where he was murdered. And I, I grow chilled to think about our money going towards more weapons that could create more Tony Robinsons. So join me, please. It's the least you could do. I won't say thank you. Do better.
Thank you. Next is Chris Olson of East Pass in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Sylvia Ilzschel.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I have two questions. Uh, first, I would like, I would like to ask the mayor. Um, have you promised the Madison Police Department that you will not reduce their eighty million dollar budget? Secondly, uh, according to the text in file number six zero six five eight, the police department estimates that an additional fifty thousand dollars needs to be allocated for the police intervention equipment project, for the acquisition of alternative force equipment for every officer and supervisory squad car. Are you scoring political points with the Madison Police Department by allowing them to buy new weapons for fighting against protesters while disguising the resolution as a passive alternative to the violent status quo? I would like a response from the mayor using the remainder of my time.
Thank you, Chris. That's not the way we do it. Um, I'd be happy to speak once we have finished with the registrants. And so we'll go next to Sylvia Ilzschel of East Washington Ave in opposition wishing to speak to be followed by Ankeeta Bahardwaj. Sorry if I didn't pronounce that correctly.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, I am actually on my partner's Zoom, which is why I was not able to speak. This is Bailey Wendelberger, um, in number, from number thirty-three. Um, so just to get that on the record, that's
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. It was, yeah, didn't realize the technical difference there until it was too late. Um, so I just wanna double down on what everyone else has been saying about, um, the allocation of funds for the police being completely inhumane. Um, there's no action that the community should stand behind except for defunding and disbanding the police in Madison. Um, it's been clear that there's um, the safety of the black and brown community, LGBTQ, immigrant, disabled, all marginalized members of the community is threatened by the police. Repeatedly, we have seen this. I've been at protests where there have been, there's been minimal, if any provocation, AKA maybe a water bottle, that's been met with war crime levels of retaliation by the police in SWAT gear, completely unnecessary. So, um, any funding given to the police should not be supported. I don't care if it's for a generator. I don't care if it's for a toothbrush. Doesn't matter. It should be given back to social services for mental health care, for substance use, for housing, for community initiative development. Um, help, you know, there are a lot of options that can be used uh, or that can be enacted proactively that effectively impact this community's well-being. Um, you know, on behalf of those whose trust that you yourself as the mayor have lost, um, and to those who feel unsafe living in their own bodies and their own communities, I just want to extra demand that the, the Madison police receive no more funding and are in fact disbanded. And there will be plenty to follow from the community if this is not done. Thank you.
Thank you, Bailey. Uh, next is Ankeeta Bahardwaj of Langton Street in opposition wishing to speak.
Hello, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hi, I'm Ankeeta Bahardwaj, and I'm Indian, and I relocated to Madison five years ago, and I'm a lawyer from India. And I want to oppose, emphatically oppose buying more lethal, less lethal weapons for the cops in Madison. I was coming back from a shop like a few days ago along with my two other white friends, and we were talking really loudly to which an unmarked cop car with two cops in it totally took a U-turn, followed us home, and stopped their car right in front of my house and looked squarely in my eyes. That is not passive aggressiveness. That's aggressiveness. I was going to my home, and you were trying to give these types of cops, who don't even have the decency to be a decent person, more weapons? Like, what are you thinking? Tear gas is internationally banned in warfare, and you literally use that on your civilians. Like, are you kidding me? The police, the police, like protests that are happening right now is against police brutality. And you are giving them more weapons to be more brutal against people of color and black people and brown people. Like, I am not gonna, I'm not gonna allow you to slap my one cheek and then give you my other cheek as well and be like, "Thank you, this was great." No, I'm not gonna do that. And I don't want my black comrades to be expected to do that either. That's why we're asking to defund the police. And I want to say very emphatically again, we should fire Kenny. And not only fire, we should persecute him, prosecute him. Because that is what is required right now. I don't give a shit about policies and laws. We need to go beyond that. That's all I want to say, and I also want to say that I agree with other members who spoke that there should be a roll call vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's the last of our registrants wishing to speak. Are there questions for any of the registrants? All right, seeing none. Um, Alder Prestajakamo, would you like to make the motion? Need to unmute you first. Are you getting a prompt? There you go.
Um, so I believe the, the motion, uh,
If you'd like, you can move your amendment
Oh, okay.
At the same time as the motion.
Oh, okay. Um, so I move, um, hold on, hold my amendment. Um, so I move, um, to So I can, I can move to, uh,
Move the item with the following amendment.
Okay, I think that's how I do it. Okay. Um, so I move item number, uh, sixty-six five eight. Um, with amendment, uh, that you should have all been circulated, that should have been circulated.
You just wanna state for the record what it does?
Um, yeah, so the amendment, uh, basically strikes all the language, um, that i- is related to the forty millimeter launchers. Um, and so the rest of the resolution would just be transferring, um, I believe it's seventy-five thousand dollars for the East District generator project.
All right, it's been moved, then, an amended resolution, uh, President Carter?
Yes, second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, the amended resolution, which would fund the generator and nothing else. And so we'll move into discussion. Uh, Alder Carter, did you wish to speak or, or Alder Prestajakamo?
I have, I have a question.
Uh, questions for staff?
Yes.
Please, Alder Prestajakamo will come back to you.
Is engineering on?
I don't see anyone from engineering, Alder.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alder. So Alder Prestajakamo, did you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, so, I, I mean, you've, you've heard all the, you've heard all the testimony tonight. Um, I mean, I also just briefly wanted to like thank everyone that's put in all the work. Um, not just this, uh, not just on this amendment, but also just all the work done um, in response to these protests, and I just wanna say that that's leadership. Um, listening, actively engaging with organizers, listening to the young people in this community. Um, that's the leadership we need right now. Um, so this amendment, uh, in, in effect is showing solidarity with those protesters, the thousands of Madison residents, you know, that are going out in the streets. Um, and I think, I think the big, the big point to make here is that this is, quote, less lethal, but in some ways still can be lethal. And again, we're seeing, we, we've seen how, you know, these were used, um, at, at these protesters, used against protesters. And, and I find that really concerning, um, you know, to say that we trust the police to use these, um, especially when they broke their own, uh, operating procedures at these protests. Um, you know, again, like, there's, there's a question of if this would even be less lethal. Um, I do think this is a microcosm of a broader discussion that we need to have as a council. Um, you know, why do we look at violence prevention, public safety, in a vacuum of policing? Um, you know, we, we don't need to give more money to the police to prevent violence at the sacrifice of black and brown bodies. You know, we can invest that money into other means of violence prevention. And, you know, some might be surprised, the research shows that this is the most effective way of violence prevention. Um, and so what we, what we're, we have a vote tonight. You heard so many people say on, on these testimonies that our words absolutely mean nothing compared to the way we vote. We can give lip service as much as we want to these, to these movements, but your vote matters, and people are watching. Um, I, I really do see that, you know, if we're going to go out there and say we, we support this movement and, um, we're listening, that this example, right, this is an example right here how we can show as a council, as a city, that we're committed to defunding the police and investing in other means of violence prevention. We're, we're committed to looking at other ways of violence prevention that don't disproportionately harm black and brown people in this community. Um, so I, and, and another great point too that was made by, uh, someone here is that this is expanding the opportunity for police to use more violence. Um, you know, again, like, we don't need to look at this, uh, we, we need to start looking at this, this public safety as a protester as well. Not, not just people that are, you know, not protesting. Um, you, you heard so many people talking about how they witnessed, you know, tear gas, um, these rubber bullets, which, which initially, you know, people, uh, police claimed weren't being used, but we have photo evidence, um, being used to harm people. And so this amendment, this amendment provides an opportunity for my colleagues to show their support, show solidarity, and truly say that they're listening to this community, listen, listening to the black and brown leaders that have been organizing these protests, that are still organizing these protests. Um, so I, I really encourage you guys to vote for this amendment, um, and, and thank the sponsors that also, um, showed up for it as well.
Thank you, Alder. I have no other alders in the queue. So again, the, the motion is the amended resolution funding the generator project and nothing else, uh, Vice President Abbas. Go ahead.
Yeah, I do believe there's two other orders.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had, yes, I failed to scroll. Thank you.
Yeah. If, yeah, they, they raised their hand before, but I'm happy to go, uh, ahead if that's okay.
Go ahead, Alder. I'll go back to them.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, first, I would like to say thank you to all the participants, uh, all the attendees for their testimony. Thank you, Simon Taylor, uh, sharing your relief. Uh, my heart really, I felt pain after hearing your story. Uh, I also want to say I have seen the horrendous and disturbing videos of police brutality on national media. It makes me sick. I know that change is needed, and I I know that change is needed and I support that change. I stand with our community here in Madison. Now is the time to turn the table and change the system. But not only police, we need to change the whole legal system and have a broader discussion around equity and race. It's going to take a lot of listening, working together, pivoting, planning, implementing, and taking action as a community. Over the last two weeks, I have received over two thousand two hundred emails, by now they might be three thousand from a constituent asking Alders about defunding and dismantling police and creating an oversight board and an independent monitor for the MPD. I personally sponsored the Oversight Board, Second Alternative, which we just passed and also sponsored the Police Auditor Position with the hope that these will be a baby steps in creating and building trust and relationships between the MPD and the community at large. I'm committed to racial justice and I'm dedicated to making various policy directions to address those issues facing our community. I would also like to share my perspective. Please know, this comes from my wholehearted commitment to serve the community with honesty and transparency. Police brutality has got to stop and we need to have a plan in place for how to move forward. We need a plan. As a responsible policymaker, I have to think for all angles and make the decision which benefit our community with the help of the public, especially our disconnected communities. As policymaker, there are so many systems and process involved which will take time. But I also understand we do not have time when black lives are in immediate danger. We cannot just talk and talk limitlessly because in the meantime, people are getting killed. Moving forward, there are some of the questions I want to bring in front of this council. First, with the support of council staff, I have been searching, researching and getting legal input around defunding the police. Approximately ninety-four percent of the police budget goes to around five hundred plus or minus MPD officials paycheck. And six per, six percent goes to operational cost. I do not know currently if the council has the power to fire an MPD official or furlough them. However, council does have a power to not hire more cops and more police and use the money on our social justice programs as some of attendees already mentioned. Second thing, the mayor office and the council with the input of public need to decide if we do not want to spend money on public safety. Then how will we utilize the money and which services could be provided? If the city is willing to take the lead and take initiative on providing services or using mental health, social workers as a first respondents to nine one one like calls, where does the immediate funding come from? How much will it cost? What mechanism would we put in a place to operate that scale of services? And how long will it take to create an infrastructure like nine one one? Where people call a different number to address their problems or complaints? Third thing, let's say we find a way to defund the police or reduce their funding. What replace them and how do we address the concern of people and businesses who do not feel safe or as an example, if someone, if someone decide to hire their own private security company? Currently, we as a community have a oversight on MPD. And we are planning to bring more oversight through a police auditor and independent civilian oversight board or committee. But if a private company fills that gap, that vacuum, we will not have an oversight over them. Fourth, I want to provide you with some example from District Twelve, which I represent, in mid-July two thousand nineteen. There were daily escalations and disturbance with youth, many nine one one calls at the McDonald's on Drayden Street. I was at the meeting where the Northside Police Captain, Director of Northside Planning Council and some service provider discussed in detail exploring ways that NPC could bring services provider to the scene to help diffuse the growing conflict there. With the collaboration of MPD and NPC and Hayward Simons from a local community group who mentors youth, addressed that escalation by bringing adult staff there every day with jump ropes, boxing gloves, drums and food. MPD also helped Hayward to get some small funding through the Madison Police Foundation. And Hayward and his team did a tremendous job of calming the situation. The daily police calls stopped. It was a great collaboration between MPD, NPC and service provider to find a peaceful resolution to the problem for all the stakeholders, including the youth. It was a successful model. My understanding is the MPD, MPD was very happy to have the community groups involvement and have this community-related issue solved with community solutions. Currently, we as a city do not have any mechanism in place where people can go to the community-oriented place or call a community-driven organization to get the help at their fingertips. In one phone number or at one place, people's first response is to call nine one one. I think all parties, including MPD, will appreciate if it, if we create mental health units and social services and use them to de-escalate situation with domestic or non-violence calls. I do not have answer to all the question. However, moving forward, we will see difficult situation. We will have to decide if we reduce services from any city department. Realistically, the first step should be to look into what social services the city can provide, how much it costs, what the timeline look like, looks like, so we can move forward with a plan. I believe ultimately, after reforms are made, policing through partnership with public health could be a good start. I do believe in you and in our council that we can think creatively, compassionate, compassionately, and together we move powerful forward-thinking plan together in a place for a stronger, safer community for all our people. Let's be, let's us be an example for the world. With that, I will support and I will also request to add my name as a sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Abbas. And my apologies to the other Alders. I had scrolled to look for engineering and lost track of you. So we'll go next to Alder Harrington McKinney.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Mayor, and I, uh, did raise my hand when the, um, the speaker, I had a question for the speaker, I think the name was Shade, and so that traveled. Let me back up and, uh, thank you, Abbas, uh, um, Alder Abbas, I really appreciate your statements. And, um, it really refocuses us on what is before us and I appreciate that. And I, I hate that I have to, uh, back into the when the, um, speakers were speaking, this was Shade, I think, was the speaker, I might not be pronouncing that name correct.
Shadera Kilfoy Flores.
Right, and let me say unequivocally, that's a lie. At no time have I ever, nor would I ever hush a voice that's speaking. That's not me, that will never be me, that's just not who I am. And I wanted to say that to you, uh, before we got into the other discussions. I wanna be clear about that. I am an educator, a special educator. I taught young people in that transitional period of alternative learning when they were between juvenile detention and jail and the community. I believe in restorative justice. I teach restorative justice. To sit by and hear, then, and I'm, this is out of order, but, um, Madam Mayor, I tried to get in when the public speaking was going on, is just that, um, um, to be, I own what I say. But if I didn't say it, and if I didn't do it, I'm gonna let you know that too. The night that Tony Robinson was killed, I was on my way back from Ferguson, Missouri. And that is where I saw the blood of Mike Brown in the street. And all of the flowers and momentum's that were at the place where he died. At that location, the building where he was killed is a building that I lived in with my child. And it was at that time that I made the decision to come back and run for city alder because that was my child or could have been my child. And so when the assumption is, is that you don't know what it means to be black, that's a lie. I will not accept it, I will not listen to it. And if that's, that, if that's your story and that's how you are moving forward and change, then shame on you. If you think that I, as a black mother, does not have compassion for all of the shootings and killings and to see black males disrespected in a way like that, that black lives don't matter, you are a lie. And I own that, I'm saying that, I'm saying that. If I never get a chance to say anything else, I need to say that. There was a time when I said, oh, yes, all lives matter. But the more and more that I see what I see and know what I know, I have to say, but do black lives matter also? Until you've seen death, until you've seen hangings, until you have seen the destruction that I have seen, then shame on you. I'm supporting this because I do not wanna add to the, um, the, the lethal weapons and all this that we've talking about. So I'm gonna be sponsoring this and I'm going to say yes. But for those individuals who say, because you don't speak like me, because you're not, you're not on my side, you are, you are just what you are fighting against. And I have a problem with that. If you wanna know what, um, racism is all about, systemic racism just doesn't end with the police. And I'm hoping that if we are sincere about changing the tr- the trajectory of where we are, we'll be, begin to really look at systems. We'll begin to even look at the divisiveness in city government. We'll be looking at businesses that can't make it. It's not just the police. You can take all the money and defend, and defund the police, but in the end, if you're not really looking at systemic changes, you have done nothing. I have seen money distributed to organizations. And that money oftentimes don't get down to the people that's most impacted and the most in need. And so we're, we are overhaul, overhauling the entire system. That's what I'm looking for. You can't do a piece of it if you're not willing to do it all. So that's why I wanted to say before we got into the discussion, but it's out of sequence. But if you are really about systemic change, white privilege exists. Let me say that. It exists in the city, it exists on the police department, it exists in our common council offices and spaces. It is, it exists. And if you are serious about changing what is so, you're going to uncover the rocks wherever they are. That's my challenge to you. Don't just say it's the police if you're not looking at doing the whole thing. And it's not gonna be a cap, accomplished in one fell swoop. It's been four hundred years of that. And you're not gonna change it in one day. But if you are really, truly saying that Madison is a place where everyone has the opportunity to thrive, then you've gotta look at the whole thing. That's why I'm in it. I'm not in it for any political gratitude or high, I'm not in it for that. I love Madison, I love the city of Madison, I will fight for the city of Madison. And that's the end of my story. I had to say that, Mayor, even though you took me out of sequence. Thank you.
My apologies again, Alder, for doing that. Uh, Alder Rommel, my apologies to you as well.
It's okay, I get to hear more conversation. Um, so, okay, I'm a little late to this discussion. I did not attend the Finance Committee and I confess I did not listen to it. And all of a sudden, I started getting all these emails about ra- uh, launchers, forty-five millimeter launchers. I'm like, what is that? And I went, and I didn't find it. I saw the Legastar item and nothing there. So, of course, I, you know, since followed up with staff and found out more about it. And I guess there's one thing that I learned today that I assume at least some of you know, is the idea of adding more or this less lethal weapons is one of the ad hoc recommendations that was put into the budget with an amendment by Alders Bedar and Evers ever, uh, ever to make it come back to the council, which is why this is coming to us, to authorize any spending. And so, at least that's what I learned today and people can, can correct me if I'm wrong. But there was a budget and an amendment that talks about how, um, these weapons such as, um, I can't really read it, but, um, that were tasers and why I lost my notes, um, projectile launchers, tasers, ammunition and training would be part of this, this project item, which is what is in this reallocation money. So I guess what I'm raising all that for is as we move forward, since, you know, we're, we're kind of now mythologizing the ad hoc recommendation. So here's maybe one that needs a little bit more scrutiny as time has progressed. So that when we move forward with the Civilian Oversight Board and starting to implement some of these things, I think we'll definitely need to take another look at the, what does it mean to have less lethal weapons? And, um, and I think also having had the opportunity lately just to talk to a lot of people, we talk about, uh, in other Alders have mentioned, Alder McKinney, restor- restorative justice. And I think we all support that program, but we need to make it more, um, have more muscle. Because it kinda lets people who haven't done a really lot of bad things in it, but anyone who's got, so I don't know the line, but there's some line where you wouldn't be directed to that program. Well, maybe that program needs to be expanded and it's a joint thing, mostly maybe the county, maybe the city. Which also I've heard people say, what's happening with the city and county liaison committee? Could they start taking up some of these issues? Because the criminal justice system, as, as we mentioned, it's a system and it's bigger than the city and it's part of the county. And so I think as we move forward and I do support taking this money out, but I, I, I do think it raises the question of what it is um, less lethal weapons means in the current moment. And I would just urge us all to keep this this, um, this topic as we move forward with the Community, um, Oversight Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Presto Jacomo.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I, I guess I just wanted to start out by saying, I, I recognize the nuances of the situation and I, I also recognize that the present circumstances have shifted a lot of perspectives on what it means to mitigate violence. Um, and I, I think what we, what we're seeing now is showing very clear how, you know, the answer, the answer to mitigating police violence and police brutality is not by investing into, you know, less lethal weapons, which in theory are still lethal, it's by eliminating lethal or violence in the first place. Um, and I know that sounds like, eh, for some people that might be really radical, but frankly, it's, you know, we need to push harder on these issues and I, um, you know, I get into a point to like say that I'm pushing on these issues because my, my privilege as a white person, m- my existence as a white person up, upholds the white supremacist structures within society. And I think that's so important for my non-black and non-indigenous colleagues on the council to understand is we uphold these structures regardless of our intent. Is we uphold these structures regardless of our intent, uh even if we call ourselves an ally, we uphold these structures. And I, I think a, a point I've been thinking about too is the moment we become complacent in all of this. Is the moment we stop pushing out of fear of repercussion. You know, we can't, we can't allow ourselves to get comfortable with reform. Uh, I think this is a perfect example and honestly, I'm, I don't even feel like I'm here to make people comfortable. Um, I'm here to push for things that make people uncomfortable. I'm here to confront our own privileges, to force others to confront their own privileges. And something that I've noticed as an activist too is that we don't go far enough, enough a lot of times because of, out of fear of rocking the boat. Um, and that has to change. So I guess before I finish too, I also want to just uplift something about being anti-racist and what it means to be a co-conspirator. Um, and this is a really important point, I hope, you know, all my, you know, non-black and non-indigenous colleagues listen to this as well. We, we need to be constantly, constantly self reflecting on our decisions and even ones that happened years and years ago. Um, being self-critical is, it's inherent to anti-racism. You know, I'll, I'll admit, I'll admit that I've made mistakes in the past and I've potentially harmed Black Indigenous people of color. I, I'll, I'll own up to that. Um, but the point is I've owned up to those mistakes. I- if I had the opportunity to make public votes in the past to increase police funding. Or maybe had a minor statement here or there that led to this crisis. You know, I'd be apolo- I'd be apologizing and I'd be admitting those mistakes. You know, it's not about, no one is here to cancel anyone for past mistakes. We're here to reform this, uh, you know, make sure that we're correcting our past mistakes. And I would be working ten times harder, ten times harder to dismantle those systems that I caused and the damage that I caused. So, you know, again, I, I'm, I'm appreciative for all the, the work that's been put into all of the discussions that, you know, have led to this point. And again, like really, really want to emphasize how. Uh, there's so much psychological trauma that we don't talk about outside of physical trauma. That needs to, needs to be uplifted twenty-four seven. Um, so again, I'm, I'm really thankful uh for all the work that everyone's been putting into this. Um, and then I, I guess I'll wrap it up by asking too, if we could have a roll call vote, if that's possible on this amendment. I was trying to separate the two motions in the first place. That was my attempt.
Thank you, Alder. We can absolutely have a roll call, um, but uh, there, at this point, we're not considering an amendment. There's just the main motion.
Okay.
Uh, anything further, Alder?
No, that's it.
Thank you, Alder. Alder Alboras.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to go and share that I was uh. Going to be supporting. Um, Alder Prestigiacomo's um alternate resolution as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Well, uh, the clerk will add Alder Alboras as a co-sponsor, please. Alder Balday.
Yeah, I'd just like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you, Mayor.
That will be done. All right, now I think for real, uh Alder Prestigiacomo.
Uh, I was, I was hoping to ask Mike Cause or the city attorney, um, cause if he's, is he still on?
Should be. Yes. Go ahead, Alder.
So. I, I understand a motion was made. I uh be, my initial intention was to separate the motions uh so that we would have a vote on the amendment separately. Um, my question is. Mike, how, uh, how, um, you know, how, how can we use this to like get a, a roll call vote on that? I'm, I'm kind of, um. Confused on like the original attentive or that, that original motion, why we can't have a roll call vote separately on the amendment.
Well. Right now, the, 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 the motion is on the floor with your amendment included. Um, and that's, that's the motion. Um, there is no other motion on the floor to be considered a vote on. Uh, I guess I'm not clear on what, what it is that you, you wanted to try to accomplish.
So the mo- the motion is to bring the amendment with the res- uh with the resolution altogether and vote on that. Um, my, my question is because that's motion, that motion has already been made, is it possible to separate those two? Um. To, okay, so I see Marcia shaking her head, to actually get a vote on this amendment?
Uh, Alder, uh, the, the council will be voting on your amendment. Uh, at. On the resolution as, as you wish to amend it.
There, there is been no other motion made other than your motion.
Okay, and then my, so what I'm understanding is that if, if this vote passes, then it also means the resolution passes with the generator. Uh, fully through, okay.
That's correct.
For the amendment separately, okay.
Anything further, Alder? No. All right. Uh. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, just so we're all clear, the motion is approval. Of the amended motion as moved by Alder Prestigiacomo. So to uh approve the funding for the generator and nothing else. And I believe you all have that language in front of you. So that's what's been moved and seconded. And the Alder has requested a roll call vote on that. So, uh, all those in favor. Uh, of the amended resolution. I, those opposed, no, as your name is called and I will unmute you all and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
Hi.
Alder Harrington McKinney, I. Alder Heck?
Aye.
Alder Heck, aye. Alder Hennick?
Aye.
Alder Hennick, aye. Alder Campbell?
Aye.
Alder Campbell, aye. Alder Lemer?
Aye.
Alder Lemer, aye. Alder Martin?
Aye.
Alder Martin, aye. Alder Morland?
Aye.
Alder Morland, aye. Alder Prestigiacomo?
Aye.
Alder Prestigiacomo, aye. Alder Rommel?
Aye.
Alder Rommel, aye. Alder Skidmore?
Aye.
Alder Skidmore, aye. Alder Tierney?
Aye.
Alder Tierney, aye. Alder Vervier?
Aye.
Alder Vervier, aye. Alder Abbas?
Aye.
Alder Abbas, aye. Alder Alboras?
Aye.
Alder Alboras, aye. Alder Balday?
Aye.
Alder Balday, aye. Alder Bedar?
Aye.
Alder Bedar, aye. Alder Carter? Alder Carter, sorry, can you repeat that for me? Can't. I can't hear her.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Alder Carter, aye. Alder Evers?
Aye.
Alder Evers, aye. Alder Foster?
Aye.
Alder Foster, aye. Alder Furman?
Aye.
Alder Furman, aye. Twenty ayes, zero noes.
With twenty ayes, the motion passes. And I will uh mute you all again. And I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda. Uh. President Carter. President Carter, you're still muted.
Oh, one day, one day. Um, just for introduction, I'm creating the president's task force on critical issues affecting the black community.
Uh, so for introduction from the floor, uh Vice President Abbas, a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to introduce from the floor. Is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of introduction? Seeing no objection, we'll record a unanimous vote in favor of introduction, President Carter.
And um. Oh, well, last time I did this, I almost got slammed, but we have some birthdays. Alder Skidmore, June twenty-seventh. And Max, July seventh. Happy birthday.
Thank you, President Carter. Uh, Alder Morland.
I move to adjourn.
President Carter?
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn, is there any objection to recording unanimous vote in favor of adjournment? Seeing no objection, we will do so and we are adjourned. Thank you all and have a good night.